All right, here we go. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Welcome to the Palmdale City Council. Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call?
Mayor Bishop.
Here.
Mayor Protem Loa.
Here.
Councilmembers Olson.
Here.
Bettencourt.
Here.
And Alacron.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, thank you very much. At this time, we're gonna have a pledge of allegiance, followed by a brief moment of silence, and that's gonna be pled by the graduating class, the Palmdale Vida class this year. Everybody stand. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with everyty and justice for all.
All right, thank you very much. All right, I'd like to thank the graduating Palmdale Vida class once again for coming out with their color guard. All right, that moves us along to item number four on the agenda, presentations. It's the I Serve Youth Leadership Academy presentation to the council. We have a staff report here from the Director of Parks and Rec. How you doing?
Team member from the I Serve program, and we have a presentation here from our I Serve teens for the last five months, what our teens have been able to accomplish here in our community. All right, so the first area of focus that we've been able to accomplish these past five months is the introduction to city departments and civic services career paths. So the students were able to listen to different department directors at the beginning of our program, hear different things throughout the city, different career paths that our teens can be able to do one day after graduation. The second area of focus was teaching job readiness and interview skills. So each of the teens that came through our program was interviewed by different city staff, different directors in different departments to get them prepared for different jobs. And as you see on the bottom left, that is Dorian. He's one of two students that got hired on for this summer within our Parks and Recreation Department. The next area of focus is leadership skill development. So as you see there in the picture in the bottom left here in the council chambers, our students were able to come up, speak, ask different questions. We gave them different leadership opportunities throughout the last five months. And you'll see there, the Women's Symposiums, where they're able to lead different community projects under the guidance from the teens. Next area of focus was fostering community engagement and participation. So our teens, these past five months, were able to go out in the community, work with different projects, also lead there in the picture in the middle, a Season of Service project, where other teens in our community participated and did different projects at Desert Sands Park. And also, you'll see some other projects there on the bottom right, was a few things we've done at Saves as well. The last area of focus was the designing to achieve key objectives and engaging with youth with our community. So with that, we want to continue to have our teens involved in the different programs. We want them to be ambassadors for the next group of teens that we are able to work with and to do different internships within our summer and just be able to continue to grow and see more teens become more, you know, employees for the city of Palmdale as we move forward. So with that, Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members, is there anything additional that you would like to hear from any of our I Serve team members at all?
I would just like to personally thank staff for bringing this forward and making it happen. As one of the youngest council members ever in the city of Palmdale, one of the first things I asked for was some type of youth program to get the younger people in our city involved in local government. And this program has done just that. So thank you to the staff. Thank you for the students for taking advantage of this resource and the parents for making sure they could be here to take advantage of this program.
Can we take a moment to recognize the students who are here who participated in the program?
Absolutely, yeah. Students, go ahead and stand, please. In behalf of the entire I Serve team, students, we just wanna thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and council just for this opportunity.
All right, thank you very much.
Mayor and council, if I may, the students were provided with certificates for their achievements and proclamations in a private ceremony a couple of weeks ago. And each one of the students will be getting a $500 scholarship directly to them for their participation. So thank you so much for being our inaugural part.
Now, thank you again. All right, so that takes us to item number 4.2. That's the Ghetto Film School presentation. So we have a staff report. Tell us a little bit about that. You know, before we start that, something was just brought to my attention. So before we move on, let's rewind, go back to 4.1, and we're gonna present the scholarship checks to all these students right here, right now. Call you up, there you go. Emily, where you at? Emily here?
Full names, Mayor. Mayor? Full names.
Okay. Lorena Duran Morales. Oliver Duran Morales. We're gonna get up, we're gonna have a picture with all you at the end. Naraya Evans. You got that right. Guillermo Garcia. Elissa Nassim. Naieli Pacheco. Isabella Panusi. Juliana Panusi. She here?
You minor.
Cameron Proctor. Natalie Valera. Anthony Walker. Isabella Alderti. Dorian Martinez. All right, now, all you guys can come up and we'll get a group photo. Give them another round of applause for completing this program. We have one more round of applause. We're gonna be doing this program every year.
So I just wanted to say thank you to all the staff, the volunteers, the parents, and the students. Especially, thank you for having me participate in that panel discussion a few weeks back. The questions you asked were great. Some of you asked tough questions. Some of you asked downright almost gotcha questions. But that takes a lot of courage to do that. And so I can't wait to see you continue to grow, for you to get in positions of leadership, for you to have elected positions, and we're totally gonna return that favor.
The gotcha question?
Yeah.
Yeah, I got hit with the gotcha.
They're coming, I'm writing them down.
I was hit with the gotcha question, so. But thank you guys for coming out and participating in our program. All right, I think now we're ready to move on to our next presentation. That's gonna be 4.2, Ghetto Film School. Without further ado.
And members of city council, my name is Amanda Brechner. I am the Economic Development Core Leader for the city of Palmdale. I'm also the Primary Staff Lead for GFS Palmdale Film Lab, which occurred this March at the Palmdale Film Stage. We had the pleasure of partnering with Ghetto Film School to put on a one-week intensive film lab where we taught students the importance of making a short film. They learned necessary skills such as screenwriting, directing, producing, lighting, cinematography, and everything else that they need to know to make a short film. During this one-week experience, they shot, wrote, and directed three short films. We actually have them live on the city of Palmdale website if you wanna check them out. We do have a short video to show you today which captures their experience as well. But first, to tell you more about the program is Kyle. Kyle is the Executive Program Director at GFS, and he has produced over 100 student short films. Kyle?
Good afternoon, Mayor.
How you doing?
Council, general public. My name is Kyle Prevencio-Rangold, and I'm the Executive Program Director at Ghetto Film School, Los Angeles. Ghetto Film School is a nonprofit film organization founded in 2000 to educate, develop, and celebrate the next generation of great storytellers. We were founded in the South Bronx. We opened in Los Angeles in 2016 and expanded to London in 2020. At the core of our programming is a 30-month fellowship. It's what we oversee for 14- and 19-year-olds. We recruit students from all across Los Angeles, specifically where there's a lack of arts education, and teach them how to write, direct, produce, shoot, edit, all the business side of the film industry, and also develop them in professional ways to enter the industry. We had the privilege of partnering with the city of Palmdale, which we were super excited about and got to work out at the film stage. We have some of our wonderful participants here today, which we're gonna acknowledge shortly. And it was a fantastic program. We facilitated a truncated version of our flagship course, which is GFS 101, where we teach a four-minute nondialogue short film production course modeled after NYU and USC's film curriculum. I'm a Tisch graduate, so a little biased there. And so, yeah, we're really excited about being able to collaborate. The film stage was such an incredible space, and we hope to collaborate in the near future and hope we can play the video to show you the highlights of the program.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So you want to take one mark?
I've learned about continuity. I learned that if I'm gonna be a director, I have to be observing, to be a good observer. I wanna do something real. I see myself in the film industry, just making things with people that love to do what I do.
I am the sound woman. It's a big, it's a big day.
Tickets to the excellent and to the king song? I thought she didn't have it.
Working with cameras and everything, but then like working with somebody, and then like talking and stuff like that, and like getting to know each other, like, we have more in common than we need.
So I just wanted to emphasize a huge thank you to the city of Palmdale, Louise Gadebe, and all the team over there with Amanda's office that helped us put this program together. We couldn't have done it without them. And I'm excited to invite Mona Lisa up here to the podium to speak a little bit more about GFS and the Palmdale Film Spring Lab.
Um, hello, city of Lancaster?
Palmdale.
Oh, hey, looks so cute. Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm used to this, I'm used to this already, but. Hello, city of Palmdale. My name is Mona Lisa, and I'm just gonna say, I loved Ghetto Film School. I loved the filming, and I really discovered myself through this process because I discovered that I liked sound. I discovered I liked production art. I discovered that I just liked filming in general because it just brings out the best in me and it brings out all the talent that everybody has and that I have that's just invested in us. I basically, I really just like, I really took this process really seriously when I came to film because I've always kind of had this like passion for performing arts and production and everything like that. And really just getting into that that professional feel and really taking this seriously, it just helped me to learn what the industry is about and it helped me to learn what like, what directing was about and how directing went. Being chosen as a director of a film really helped my leadership skills to grow as well as working with different staff on my team with my movie, with my movie, my short, my short film. It really did just spark a whole new journey for me. I'm just like, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle and Mona Lisa. So we also have some certificates as well for the students that completed the program. This is a very busy week for some of the students due to several academic commitments, but we have a few that are here today to receive the certificates in person. If you would like to hand them out, Mayor?
Thank you very much. And I appreciate the staff for making this happen, Ghetto Film School for utilizing our film stage, one of the many uses of our film stage. It's very important we embrace this business as it's one of the largest in Southern California and can offer a great career path for our youth. So with that, Mona Lisa Tovar. We have a certificate recognition, just a little token of our appreciation. Come on up. Makaya Henderson. Julia Maganelles. All right, thank you, guys. Do you wanna bring up? Let's bring up all the students and then anybody from Ghetto Film School, and let's take a group photo before they go. All right, so moving along, we have our cute creator video. Why don't we go ahead and play that? All right, make sure to adopt at our local shelter. We have animals available. All right, for those of you who are here for presentations, you're more than free to go. We'll give you guys a minute to cycle out of the room, and then we'll jump into item 4.3. That's gonna be a presentation of the Animal Services Feasibility Study. Local government for the day. It's great to see the youth engaged. All right, here we go. Item 4.3.
Hi, good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem and council, Carrie German, Public Safety Supervisor. So tonight. Tonight, we are here to discuss the animal feasibility study. It helps when it's turned on. A little bit of history on the Animal Services Feasibility Study. In the spring of 2023, the city issued an RFQ to solicit animal care industry experts to assist in understanding the state of animal welfare in the city of Palmdale. The city engaged animal arts, design studios, and Teen Shelter USA to assess the Los Angeles County Department of Animal Care and Control's Palmdale Animal Care Center and its ability to serve the city and to present alternatives for providing animal welfare resources to the community. A little bit about animal arts. Animal Arts has designed over 1,400 animal care projects in its 43-year history and deeply understands the missions and goals of municipal animal shelters to protect community welfare, provide meaningful services to community members, and care for animals in need. Their mission to support the advancement of animal welfare and wellness through their design work drives them to collaborate with other industry leaders and continually innovate to create better spaces for both animals and the people who care for them. Animal Arts has a history with LA County Department of Animal Care and Control, having worked on a master plan in 2017. In doing so, Animal Arts has analyzed all facilities under the Department of Animal Care and Control's jurisdiction and understands the conditions of each facility and the areas they serve. Teen Shelter USA is a national consulting firm helping municipal and private animal shelters reach their full potential. Founder, veterinarian, and animal welfare strategist, Dr. Sarah Pizano, who we have with us here tonight, has helped over 130 shelters in 24 states by improving systems, field services, municipal contracts, community safety net programs, population management, live outcome programs, and effective public policy. Dr. Pizano has more than three decades of experience in public and private shelter leadership. She's part of creating Target Zero Consulting Program, University of Florida Courtesy Faculty Member, Open Door Veterinary Collective Veterinary Ambassador, Funding Advisor for Joni Bernard Foundation and PetSmart charities, Matty's Million Pet Challenge Team Member, and author of the book, The Best Practice Playbook for Animal Shelters. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Pizano to share the findings of the study.
Thank you, Carrie, and it's so great to be back in Palmdale and to see you all. So we are gonna talk about, just briefly, the scope of the assessment was to look at what's happening at the LA County shelters in terms of programming and make recommendations for your city to move forward in these different ways. And so what we found at your shelter is that the basic programs that we recommend today in animal welfare and modern-day animal control and sheltering are in place. So those include safety net programs, community proactive programs, which I know, thank you, you all contribute to targeted subsidized Spain Neuter, which is absolutely crucial, vaccine clinics, things like that, population management, adoption programs, foster and rescue partnerships. All these major pieces are in place at your Palmdale Center and are operating well. When people criticize or say, these programs aren't, you know, we don't have enough programs or there's problems with the programs, you have to understand the need in your community far exceeds the funding for these programs. So whether it's from the city of Palmdale or from LA County. So that's the gap. But the baseline programs are in place, and that's important for you as a council to understand when we talk about the recommendations. Certainly with every organization, there are improvements that can happen. So live outcome numbers, percentages of animals saved, for one. When your building, or the LA County building here was designed and built, like so many building and construction projects, your project was value engineered. The problem that happened at your site is the surgery area was made so much smaller than it actually needs to be that there's not really ample room to even do efficient surgery programs, let alone add public surgeries. So that's definitely a problem and a limitation. So what was asked of us is to look at these different options. What would your options be moving forward? One is to construct a brand-new animal care center. And I cannot emphasize enough why we do not recommend this pathway forward. This would cost many, many tens of millions of dollars. And as discussed, the programs are already in place in your community. The gap is in funding. We cannot build our way out of this problem, if you will. In fact, we don't have a massive overpopulation program, problem in our country. We have a management issue, and we have a lack of resources for the people that need it. So I can't emphasize enough to not go with option one because it would be not because it would be not only a waste of your resources, but duplication of services that are already in place. The second is to stay just like you're doing, status quo. We understand one of the reasons and motivations for asking for this study was the future increases in costs. Unfortunately, the cost to provide veterinary services to animals has far escalated inflation. So this is a major issue everywhere. The second is, I have yet to seen a sheltering organization, whether it's private or public, understand where their budget needs to be or have a realistic budget template. Unfortunately, in our industry, there is no template. So if you asked me what the norm was or what the recommendation is, there are no benchmarks. It is a wide variety of per capita that council and commissioners commit to animal services. So it really is individual, community to community. But the cost to provide these services is and will continue to escalate. And I don't believe that you could do, as the city of Palmdale, provide all of these programs and a shelter and do it for less of a cost. Option three is to invest in resources to reduce intake. And by that, I mean, we're helping people either keep their pets or help them find alternate placement for their pets. Remember, in the United States, this is happening every single day, all over. 187 million pets in homes, less than 6 million going into shelters. So most of the time, people are rehoming. The other issue is the dogs at large. We also know, and we have lots of great research now that shows those dogs were in their neighborhoods. So we don't necessarily have to bring them into our shelter system. Again, most community members are using Nextdoor. They're talking to their neighbors. They're using their Ring cameras to get those dogs home. Cats are altogether different. We live differently with cats. But again, taking a cat into the shelter because they're outside is not the right pathway. And thankfully, you are all not doing that. The most important thing and way to invest your resources is for spay neuter, especially for those cats that have access to the outside. So when we talk about these investments in resources to reduce intake, it means that we are going to target the populations that are at risk to enter the shelter. Those are pet owners who are living in poverty or perhaps right above poverty. And some people, frequently people ask me, well, well, isn't the answer, those people shouldn't have pets? And we have to be realistic about our goals and what we're trying to achieve here. Out of the gate, 29 million pet owners are on government assistance. So saying that none of them should have pets is not really an achievable goal. What we need to do is make sure that we're helping them care for their pets to the best of their abilities. So I am going to skip to C, to three C. So Carrie is a very instrumental part of this plan for you. She is constantly looking for networking opportunities. And if you remember from the feasibility study, we said, hey, option three is a pet resource center with access to veterinary care with spay neuter. And here's the appropriate cost or the, the cost that would, to do that. However, since we were here, there is actually an organization that is being formed right now and they are planning on opening a spay neuter clinic in your community. I can't tell you how pivotal this is for you. We are constantly looking at ways for public and private entities to partner. And so this is an important partnership for you. So we can now say, don't build your own spay neuter clinic in light of this upcoming nonprofit spay neuter clinic because that will save you an enormous amount of money, number one. Number two, we're facing a very serious veterinary shortage in the United States. So veterinarians in private practice are in great demand. That's because pet ownership, again, has escalated through the roof and the number of veterinarians graduating from schools has not kept up. And there's a whole variety of reasons why access to care is an issue as well. My point is that even if you did decide to do your own spay neuter clinic, I promise you staffing it would be an incredible challenge. And this nonprofit already has a veterinary team assembled. So really great news for you all when that gets going to partner and provide those surgeries. The number one way, as you know, that's correlated with reducing intake is subsidizing very targeted surgeries. What we recommended was do not subsidize all Palmdale residents because not everybody needs that subsidy. And you have finite funds and a lot of need. Those subsidies need to be focused on large dogs and then those people who are on, you know, living in poverty or cannot otherwise spay or neuter their pets. That is correlated with reducing intake. So when we talk about reducing intake, we're talking about animals not being born or we're helping them in other ways. So really excited that those recommendations are changing for you. This is exactly what we wanted to see happen in your community. So I wanted to ask any of you if you had any questions for me in particular. And if you didn't, I'm available virtually or via email or phone anytime. But any questions now?
Yeah, I'll just, I'll start. There's no doubt that we need more animal services for our community. I attended an event hosted by Animal Control, like Animal Control, the council member Bettencourt, and it was packed. It was, I think the event didn't start till around 9:00 AM. At 7:00 AM, the park was already packed and it wasn't even a spay neuter event. It was a, an event where people can just get resources and advice from a vet and like checkups, that kind of thing. And it just, it became more clear that we needed to focus on resources like that and more preventative. Because the fact of the matter is, we can't, we can't pay $8 million plus for an animal control contract three years from now. We're going to have to start thinking on our feet and be a little bit more proactive and look at really just a hybrid of solutions to make sure that we're not paying Animal Control that amount of money for the, the work that they're doing in our community. It's just, it's just not going to work.
Do we have anyone from Animal Control here today? No? Because my question is this, when we ask people to go to our shelter and get animals and to avoid the breeders, there's a lot of illegal breeders out there. All you got to do is get online and you, you're going to find tons and tons of animals for sale. Does Animal Control have investigative people that go out and address those kinds of illegal kennels? Is it the illegal breeding that's going on? Who handles that? The Sheriff's Department, I don't think, would want to get involved in that. They've got enough to do. So does Animal Control have investigators to do that?
Animal Care and Control does. And part of what we're looking at to help reduce the costs and to affect the welfare is we're looking at what we can do as the city of Palmdale as far as through code enforcement measures, maybe enacting some different ordinances that we can really focus on that. So we do have a new care center manager at the Palmdale Center, very experienced. He's been around for quite a while. But we are looking, we've already began the conversation on what the city of Palmdale can do in coordination and in partnership with Department of Animal Care and Control to start addressing some of those. And that is going online, looking on Nextdoor, looking on Facebook, and really promoting that adopt-out shop and having some type of, of consequences for those, those backyard breeders.
I, I think it might be a little difficult for the city of Palmdale to address some of it because the majority, I've been online at Seanie's, they're in the county pockets, the county area, little, little rock area. There's a lot of big breeders out in those areas that we can't control.
Absolutely, and we would hope that maybe what we could do here, and if it's an education and outreach piece, if we could inform our residents who are maybe looking to purchase those animals from there and we kind of cut off the, the demand, hopefully that might reduce the supply.
Okay, thank you, thank you. I enjoyed your presentations, by the way, they were very informative.
Thank you so much.
So, excuse me, thank you for your presentation. There's, there's been a lot of talk about spay neuter and some of the live programs. But did you take a look at our euthanasia rates?
Yes, and there, you know, I think it's, there's, every shelter could look at population management and how animals and why animals are coming into the shelter. What happens is, remember, when there is not a major effort to help people keep or place their pets and especially those who may be large dogs who aren't trained or may have some sort of behavior or aggressive issue, then those animals enter the shelter and quite frankly, a lot of times they get stuck. And it's very difficult for dogs and cats to deal with confinement, no different than people. So then they may act out of frustration, they may show signs of aggression. And so there were a number of euthanases that I looked at, and I want to say it was 2023, if I'm not mistaken. There were behavior euthanases. Now, some of those were community unsafe dogs and large dogs that you don't want to adopt out. And again, who, who is going to adopt those and make sure that no one is going to get bit? It's not always possible. Then you have dogs that might have behavior issues that need training, but people are not willing to, out of the gate, take a dog with behavior issues. So there were a number of behavior cases that were euthanized. And every struggle, every shelter struggles with those decisions. It's, and it's a balancing act because remember, when an animal comes into the shelter, which by the way, I've spent my career keeping animals out of the shelter for this reason, it's, it's just a race to get them out. And it's not always easy. And the longer they're there, the more risks there are of behavior and medical issues. So most of those euthanases were in that category.
So thank you for that. The reason I ask is because there's a correlation between our euthanasia rates and our housing availability for dogs currently. You, you mentioned that you highly oppose option one, which is the construction of a new facility that would add new kennels. But in December of 2023, not too long ago, a few months ago, the LA Times issued a really sort of jarring article about specifically about the Antelope Valley and the Palmdale Shelter. And some of the statistics that they, that they noted was that euthanasia rates doubled in recent years in, in Palmdale and Lancaster from 15 to 28%. That we're on, that this upcoming year, we're on track to kill dogs at nearly twice the average rate of the other five county-run facilities. Palmdale has 68 kennels. Baldwin Park has 190. Baldwin Park's population is 70,000. Downey's population is 110,000 and they've got 180, almost triple the amount of kennels that we have. So when, when you say, it's, it's just hard for me to, to reconcile your saying that we don't need housing availability when we clearly don't have adequate or even equitable housing availability for, for the dogs here that need the, that need the shelter in, in comparison to the others. And then we're also, you know, euthanizing, I think this last year was 352 dogs. In, in four months, between July and October, we euthanized 352 dogs because there was no housing availability. So I'm just having difficulty reconciling your non-recommendation for the, for the building of new housing, new kennels and, and the euthanasia rates that are clearly skyrocketing here in the Antelope Valley.
And that's a completely understandable question, so thank you for asking that. I was recently at a premiere for human homelessness in LA. And the social services agent said 97% of the time, when we can intercede and help a person, we prevent homelessness. So therein lies the issue that prevention is possible in LA and everywhere else, but we don't and never have, especially in animal welfare, ever focused on safety net. This is a phenomenon that's only probably five years old. I started as a public shelter director in 2005 when we used euthanasia for population control. Thankfully, in the United States, we're in the mid-80 percentile of saving. But we are still not as seriously investing resources in safety nets. So all, why I'm saying you don't need more shelters, you need more safety net so we keep animals in their current homes. People have to give up their homes, obviously housing is an issue, right? So how can we either help people keep their pets or help them rehome their pets, which is actually already the norm? So that's why I'm saying you don't need more kennel space. Then there's, and I can't speak to all those other sites, but in the consults that I've done where there is risk of euthanasia of space or capacity for care issues, I have yet to walk into a shelter and say, oh, you're doing everything you can. No, I find adoption barriers. I find limited hours for adoption. I find all the, it's so easy to get into the shelter, but it's super hard to get out. So I promise you that there's a large element of that in each of the shelters that you mentioned. We cannot build our way out of this, nor should we try because confinement in a shelter is not fair to animals when we have the responsibility to do this animal welfare business in a different way.
Yeah, and I, please don't misconstrue what I'm suggesting. I'm not suggesting that we, we don't invest heavily in the prevention side of this because I believe in prevention, essentially in every policy area possible. Because we've got to stop the problem before, you know, before it gets to the point of enforcement or whatnot. But what we also got to manage and grapple at the same time is that there's an existing problem. And although we don't want to house, you know, animals in an unsafe or in an inhumane capacity, we also don't want to euthanize them. That's not the answer. So what I'm saying is that we've, what I'm suggesting, and it's not specifically to you, it's to the council and to the public, whoever wants to provide feedback on this as we develop. And, and this comes back as an action item. I would, I would recommend that not only do we invest significantly in the prevention, you know, opportunities that have been discussed today, but that we also consider the, the construction or the establishment of additional housing space so that we can wrap our hands around the existing problems so that we don't have to euthanize as many animals as we are.
And if I could just add one more thing very quickly, that entire industry is really focusing on shifting from a shelter intake mentality to a community-based foster system, no different than rescue groups, right? So to help with that, there's programs called On Deck Foster. And those animals go into foster as opposed to coming in the shelter. So again, confinement is not fun for anyone, it's not the answer. And building a foster network that's bigger than what you already have along with your safety net programs that you're doing so much of, thank you so much, is the answer.
We actually met at Rancho Vista Park and we met with some of the community groups. And that's, that's where I was first meeting some of the organizers of some of the people who run their own nonprofits. And what they would do actually is they would get some of the animals and they'd drive them to other communities that did have shortages of animals in the shelters. Maybe areas in like San Diego or, or whatnot, where we have a surplus and then they have. They do not, so there's, there's people who actually get the animals, they run them, they make sure they have all their shots and they do a good job with that. So that's where the hybrid of solutions I was thinking about would come into play. And yeah, I've been working with Parks and Rec over years on this, trying to find a solution because I'm even afraid to say what the euthanasia rate is right now. What is it, per animal? No, like the cost. I even hate to put a cost number on it, but that's unfortunately where the burden of the, the cost is coming from. So being preventive is the first, is the first part. The spay and neuter program, which we started to implement, was a really good start. And then working with these nonprofit groups to get the animals relocated to other communities where they do need adoptions.
Right, it's a puzzle. So you have to think of all these different pieces simultaneously.
Without breaking the bank.
We need to have a consensus though with our stakeholders with some of these rescues. I know a lot of them go and they get the animals from the pound and they take them to the rescues. And then when you talked about barriers to adoption, I think we talked about this when we had our presentation, Dr. Pizzano, where once it goes to the rescue, they want to come and do a home inspection of your house before you're allowed to adopt a dog. And a lot of people find it very invasive to have some stranger come in and say, yes or no, your house is good enough for this stray pet. So a lot, a lot of these rescues are putting obstacles in place. You know, how much is your income? A lot of people don't want to disclose their income to a rescue. There, there's a lot of, lot of things that some of the rescues are doing that are creating barriers to people adopting. So I would love to have us have a think tank with some of our rescues. And I know you're connected to many of them, Mayor. So yeah, we can, we can do better. And I hope that we can work together and I really do appreciate your information.
Yes, yes, and that is a pathology that's an embarrassment in our industry, quite frankly. Yes, eh, yes, and that is a pathology that's an embarrassment in our industry, quite frankly. Um, but one idea might be for the city of Palmdale to have a foster program. And you're supporting those animals still, right? Because it's also what rescues don't wanna hear is, oh, everybody go to rescue and be in our fosters. And they're private nonprofits trying to raise money, right? So there has to be that public-private partnership, so I appreciate that, thank you.
You mentioned uh early in your presentation that we have a management issue, can you describe what you mean by that?
I meant the industry nationwide. Um, that I see in my line of work, a large percentage of animals entering shelters everywhere that should never have entered the shelter. But because we didn't set up our, we're using this hundred and fifty-year-old system, right? Rounding up rabid dogs was how this whole system was created. And here we are in twenty twenty-four, trying to fit a round hole in a square peg. So management of the whole system is the problem. There's too many animals coming into the shelter.
And the cost is reflective of that.
The cost, oh, that was one of the points I wanted to make. I find dealing with the county a little bit difficult, to say the least. Um, but some of the issues are the cost. We pay the same price per dog, no matter what. If they euthanize the dog, we say, pay the same price as if they keep it ten days and I also find them problematic to deal with on the enforcement side of things. Trying to get a hold of them to come pick up a stray dog that's running a neighborhood is very difficult. Trying to get them to do anything about a dog that barks all night long. They have to mail you an affidavit, you gotta sign it and send it back and then they'll give, it's just a pain in the butt. So um, my question that I'm building up to, is there going to be like a more in-depth recommendation of what we're gonna do to rein in the cost? What we're going to do to bring in new partners and nonprofits in a foster network? How can we work with our code to take care of some of these enforcement issues?
I'll let Carrie answer that, but um the, I mean, L A County Code is gonna be hard, right? For you all to have influence on the entire county code. It, in my opinion, um, it, that has to be city and somehow, you know, maybe you could have one A C O that was under your control. Because you as the city of Palmdale are never gonna have control over L A County, it's just not gonna happen. So you have to figure out how you can provide those services to your constituents within your city, and that may be the way for to do the enforcement part. But Carrie, do you wanna add anything to that? Well, future partnerships.
Yes, yes, we, that is what we're looking for and we have been doing some outreach. Uh, Vet in the Park was mentioned, uh, we're looking at bringing that resource uh directly to um, the center of town, so it's accessible to everybody by working with the partner that Dr. Pizano mentioned. Um, eh, as I had mentioned before, we are looking at what we can do as far as our ordinances and our enforcement. Can we uh address the barking dog issues um in-house rather than than it being um part of what animal care and control does? Um, can we address the issues of um if we can identify where these stray dogs are coming from? And as Dr. Pizano had mentioned earlier, sometimes those stray dogs belong in the neighborhood, they may not necessarily be a stray. Um, if they're there for, you know, days upon days upon days, then obviously that is a a dog that needs to be removed from the neighborhood. But if it's a one that's getting out regularly, how do we um as a city potentially address that by talking to the homeowner? And making sure that the dog stays uh where where it belongs. So we are looking at a multitude of of things. How can we um partner with these local rescues to address the issues as as far as the cost to adopt from a local rescue and the requirements that they have? We've been looking at how we can assist those local rescues because they're absolutely inundated as as well. And when a dog goes into a rescue, for the most part, unless there is serious behavior issues or serious medical issues, those dogs will stay or those cats will stay until until they they um, you know, pass away on their own. There is really not a lot of euthanasia in the, in the rescues.
So you're gonna bring back a more detailed, specific recommendations after you look into these things?
Correct, and seeing what's a a available to us. We have been reaching out to, even before we had our Spain Uda program that started in June of twenty twenty-two, we were reaching out, trying to see who our partners would be. Could we find rescues that would be able to house the animals for us instead of them going into the animal care centers? And the, it is a limitation of of the resources. There's not enough rescues and those rescues that are existing um are at max capacity or or even more. So we are, we're talking to the experts, the people that have been involved in in the rescues for a long time, they're, they're the experts. They were very um, um, uh, per, they were very big participants when we had our town hall um, at Marie Kerr Park for the feasibility studies. So they are all working with us, they're happy to know that we want to work with them. It's just a matter of the capacity to be able to do so.
And then one, one final comment with regards to partnerships, when you do your report back to my colleagues. If I would just suggest that maybe we have a conversation with our sister city, City of Lancaster. They are experiencing the same kinds of issues and and their numbers were as 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 horrendous as ours. So to the extent that cost is an issue, maybe we can engage and enter into some sort of, you know, mutual agreement where we construct a facility that both cities can utilize or I don't know exactly how. But just maybe have the conversation to see if they're even interested in in exploring solutions with us.
We actually did have those conversations when the new billing methodology came into play back in twenty twenty-one. It was actually introduced in two thousand and eighteen and then they postponed the implementation because of COVID. So we were very, very um active in working with not only Lancaster but uh Santa Clarita as well. If there was like a GPA that are a a joint um uh J P A, thank you very much, it wasn't a G P A. Um, uh, to work on that, because yes, they they, they're similar, similar demographics, uh, similar um geographical areas. So they, they experience a lot of the same things we do. So yes, they have been partners with us um throughout this process as well. Yes, we can do the history of of our our communication with them on that as well.
Can you tell us more about this uh new nonprofit coming to town or is that too soon?
It's, it's, it's secret squirrel um right now. And um, you know, I'm, I'm very cautiously optimistic, but this is an entity that that has roots in the Antelope Valley. Um, is very dedicated to animal welfare within the Antelope Valley. Um, has participated with us throughout this process. So we, there, it's, it's not, it's not finished yet and and if it happens, it'll be, it'll be absolutely amazing for us. Um, it'll be a constant source and and of of high volume Spain Uda instead of trying to to get animals into appointments at um a uh conventional uh veterinarian service. So as soon as I know, you will know.
Excellent for the valley.
It would be amazing.
Okay, well, we look forward to that, we'll think positive thoughts and thank you for all the hard work over the years as we reimagine and reevaluate how the city of Palmdale looks at animal control and animal services. Cause as you see in the cost, it's not really leaving us any choice.
We understand and we very much appreciate all the support from the council throughout the years, so thank you.
Thank you.
Um, the um room for improvement in the surgery treatment, um, that's primarily used for spaying and neutering.
Right, correct.
Are there any emergency uh surgeries or anything like that?
Um, there may be, depending on what types of animals come in with injuries and such. So there are other surgeries besides Spain Uda. They also, I know at the time of the consult, we're doing vaccine clinics, but people had to wait outside cause the waiting room was so small. That that whole area probably is fifty percent what it needs to be and what it probably started at, at the beginning of design, right? Yeah.
It looks like as far as alternatives, the only one that addresses that problem, and correct me if I'm wrong, would be the uh building a new care center. Um, do any of the other alternatives address the issue of uh surgery?
Yeah, so three A, B, and C are about a pet resource center. So A and B were, you, well, A is you build your own pet resource center, has Spain Uda, uh Spain Uda clinic in it. B was that you lease space and do a Spain Uda clinic. C is the most desirable option. And that's because um it, this is a team that already has a veterinarian and support staff ready to go, which is a needle in a haystack. So that would have been, you know, I think we we shared that in the in the feasibility study, like, yes, we love this option. But cross your fingers that you're gonna find a veterinarian that wants to do full-time Spain Uda or multiple veterinarians. What I was sharing with Carrie is, so the understanding with this um future, hopefully Spain Uda clinic is one full-time veterinarian. Typically, those veterinarians work four ten-hour days, which means three day, and I'm making this up. This is not something that this organization has shared with me at all, I haven't spoken to them. That means that three days would be vague, that clinic would be vacant. And I frequently find that in high-volume Spain Uda clinics, which mean that would be an opportunity for the city of Palmdale to do those vaccine clinics, to do high-volume Spain Uda. It's much easier to find a per diem vet or have somebody come down from the south. Or I know veterinarians at San Diego Maine are looking for these kinds of opportunities where they come and they just fill in. So think about those opportunities, there are no bad ideas here when we're talking about access to care on Spain Uda. Because there is such a critical shortage, we have to be creative in the way we provide these services now.
So we would outsource that entire area to one of these clinics?
Well, C, three C was that you partner with another organization so that that would be the least expensive way for you to subsidize surgeries so that you don't have the overhead costs of that building and running a business and having the staff. B or A and B were Palmdale does it, you know, and you do everything soup to nuts and it would include a clinic.
And has such a facility been identified in the Antelope Valley?
So while there is this organization in the process that Carrie was just talking about that are planning a Spain Uda clinic, it's not announced yet, it's not um solid yet. But that's the idea is that that nonprofit would run a high-volume Spain Uda clinic here.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sure.
Thank you, we appreciate it and everything you're doing to help the city and help the animals. It's a very good cause and it's very, very, it's very important we do this, it's from a humane aspect. So thank you very much.
Yes, thank you for having me.
All right, so takes us to consent calendar. Uh, city manager, do we have any items to pull from the agenda? Okay, showing them at this time, city clerk, can you please play the public code of conduct? And read the public participation statement, please.
Ladies and gentlemen, may I please have your attention? The meeting of the Palmdale City Council is now in order. A code of conduct will now be read. And we request that you comply with it to ensure the efficient administration of the meeting. Members of the public, it is your right to participate in today's city council meeting. And the council encourages such participation. However, the right of the public to address the council must be balanced with the need to ensure that public comment does not interfere with the orderly course of the council's business. All are reminded to abide by the following rules. Speakers must cease speaking immediately when their time has ended. Public comment on agenda items must relate to the subject matter of that item. General public comment is limited to subjects within the jurisdiction of the council. Public comment does not include the right to engage in a dialogue with council members or staff. Please remain respectful of the form and refrain from uttering, writing or displaying profane, personal, threatening, derogatory, demeaning or other abusive statements towards the council, any member thereof, staff, or any other person. Members of the audience should be respectful of the views expressed by speakers, staff, and council members. And may not excessively clap, cheer, whistle, or otherwise disrupt the orderly conduct of the meeting. Any person engaging in conduct that disrupts the meeting is subject to being removed from the council meeting. Finally, if you witness conduct or behavior by other members of the public that disrupts your ability to remain engaged or participate in this meeting, please notify city staff. Thank you for your cooperation.
Now is the time for public participation on items listed on the consent calendar, section six. Appointment, section eight. New business, section nine. Each speaker is allowed a two minutes in total for the entirety of the above sections. We have a speaker card for Mr. David Harris. Item six point four.
Good evening, council, mayor. Uh, six point four, uh, Safe and Same Fireworks and the stands for the permits. Here to speak on behalf of many nonprofits, mainly Community Development Center USA. And we need these. Safe and Same Fireworks not only provides funding to nonprofit organizations, it also provides city tax revenues. They provide an opportunity for volunteerism within the community to run these fireworks stands. It also provides an opportunity um for groups to come together in a safe and same way on the Fourth of July out in their streets. It also provides city guidelines to safely set off a city map. Um, so I am in favor of this, I know some people are not. But uh Community Development Center USA could definitely utilize the funds. Uh, our nonprofit takes the funds that we utilize for, uh, as the city knows, the the bus that the city helped restore has already been put into use and has provided multiple free field trips. The key word free because they're paid for by the Safe and Same Fireworks. Um, the young entrepreneurs, uh, we've done multiple uh field trips for them. The Girl Scouts Waste Management has used the tool, uh, the bus for tours of the um landfill. So the funds do get u- the used in a, in a positive way. So I also wanna thank uh Leslie Andrews, a business manager. Uh, she does an outstanding job working with us uh to make sure we're compliant and we're also meeting uh, the city requirements and the nonprofits that are not. Um, I know firsthand that she works with those groups to ensure their um, any, any group that wants to pursue it uh can be available for next year, so thank you.
Mr. Alan Hinkin. Item six point six.
Thank you and um, good evening, uh, Mr. Mayor and council members. Uh, I'm Rabbi Alan Hinkin, I'm the Rabbi Emeritus at Bathkineshipa Midbar in uh, in the Antelope Valley. But I stand before you as a trustee of the land, of the Palmdale City Library. Uh, since last um, um, September or October, when one of our members left the board. We've only had four members on our board and uh our, our full strength is five members. And so without that fifth person, we've been deprived that extra voice, that wisdom, uh, that life experience. We haven't had that fifth voice. On top of that, not having the fifth person has made it harder to make quorum. So we have had to cancel at least one meeting that I know of. And on several occasions, we've only had three people, the bare minimum that we need for quorum. So now before you is item six point six, which is uh the ordinance to uh authorize you to appoint a new person to the board. Uh, thank you, Mr. Curly, for for drafting that. Well, whoever did the work, thank you. So I'm here to 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 beg you, to implore you, to ask you very kindly, please approve sixteen forty-two. We really need that fifth person, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, next speaker.
We have no more speaker cards on the sections.
All right. Anybody else? Yeah. Come on down.
This, this um speaker slip is for non-agenda.
Non-agenda?
Oh, non, also later.
You'll be up after this.
Do, do you wanna speak on an agenda item or is it for a non-agenda man?
Non-agenda.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, so that concludes our public con- comments on that section. Uh, council members, would you like to pull any items from the consent calendar?
Coincidentally, the two items that I would like to pull are the two items that our public commentators um spoke about, six point four and six point six, please.
Okay, so we're gonna pull six four, six six. I was also gonna pull six four for myself. Okay. I was gonna pull six four and recuse just from one of the nonprofit organizations because they asked for a quote from my business. So I was gonna recuse just for that one. So we'll, we'll get there, uh, so we have six four, six six being pulled, anything else?
Would you approve a balance of the consent calendar?
Oh, second?
We have a motion, multiple seconds.
Oh, sorry.
Ladies first.
Thank you, sir.
Second by council member, Bettencourt. Okay, here we go, six four.
Do you wanna do a staff report first? Do we have somebody?
Do we have somebody?
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Leslie Andrews, and I serve as the Business License Coordinator for the City of Palmdale. I'm here tonight to seek your consideration and approval of thirty-seven fireworks stand permits for nonprofit organizations. Each year, the city processes applications to permit the sale of safe and sane fireworks, which will take place from noon on June twenty-eighth to noon on July fifth. According to Palmdale Municipal Code, section eight point zero four, point four nine zero, all proposed fireworks stands must be operated by nonprofit organizations for fundraising purposes. To qualify, each organization must be a nonprofit organization primarily for youth, veterans, patriotic, welfare, civic, betterment, or charitable purposes, have its principal meeting place in the city, or draw more than fifty percent of its active members from within the incorporated area, have been organized and established in the area within the city for at least twelve months preceding the filing, and have at least twenty members. Per PMC, section eight point zero four, point five zero zero E, one stand is allowed for every three thousand residents. Based on Palmdale's population estimate of a hundred and sixty-five thousand, nine hundred and seventeen, obtained from the State of California Department of Finance, a maximum of fifty-five booths may be approved. This year, thirty-seven qualifying nonprofit organizations have submitted applications for fireworks stands. Of these, thirty-three are renewals from last year, and four are from new organizations. All applicants have met the criteria and application requirements. Staff recommends that the city council approve the issuance of thirty-seven fireworks stand permits for these nonprofit organizations. This concludes my presentation and I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you for your staff report. Um, did you want to go first? Did you have a question? Okay, um, so my, my first question is, how do you do the outreach for the nonprofit organizations that are selected for these stands?
We actually do not do the outreach for them. Um, the uh TNT and Phantom uh, are the safe and sane fireworks distributors. They do their outreach and, and get their groups and that, and then have the new groups submit applications by March fifteenth of each year.
And, and the reason why I ask is because as you noted in the staff report, there are um thirty-seven permits that we're approving today. We have the capacity to approve up to fifty-five. As Mr. Harris, our public commenter, mentioned, and as we all know, these, these stands uh produce a significant amount of revenue for each of these nonprofit organizations. There are a lot of nonprofit organizations in our community that could benefit from this program. Right now, we've got eighteen available slots that we're not going to be utilizing. Eighteen available potentially organizations that could have utilized some additional revenue uh by participating in this program. Um, so I just feel like it's a lost opportunity if we're not reaching out to our local folks ourselves and saying, sending out a notice or publicizing it on our website. Uh, and, and that's, I'd sort of, I just want to, maybe next year, I, when, when, when does sales start?
I'm sorry, what's that?
When do sales start?
Ten days before.
For the safe and sane, when do they start? June twenty-eighth. Um, at noon is when the sale starts. Now, their applications uh for new groups have to be turned in by March fifteenth.
Right, and so, but that's my point is, is if we, like, maybe in January or February, we send out notification to all of the local nonprofit organizations that we do work with. Like, there are several leaders in this room that I, that, you know, are, are you know, working with community organizations that are not included in this program. I know there are a lot of local schools and recreational groups that we hear from throughout the course of the year that need additional funding, that reach out to us individually as council members in our own respective districts. Sometimes they come to council and say they need additional funding for, you know, whatever, a trip, or a competition, or uniforms, whatever. Um, but my point is that eighteen, there are eighteen slots that we could have utilized if we had potentially done. I would, I would imagine that there would have been, there would have been a significant number of additional applications if we had done our own outreach to incorporate, bring new uh nonprofit organizations that we know uh are, are, are local and in need of financial support into, into the program and into the fold. So you know, maybe move out. What I would have suggested, if this would have come to us sooner, I would have suggested we extend the application process maybe for, you know, two weeks or a month so that we could um maybe reach out to some local folks and they could, they could submit their applications, but it seems like it's too late in the process this time. So for, for next year, uh, I would suggest, I don't know, you know, it's not incumbent upon me to make the determination, but I would suggest to this council and to our city manager that we do independent outreach to our local nonprofit organizations to make sure that we maximize the capacity um of, of these sales.
We actually had an increase this year. Last year was one of our worst years ever as far as getting nonprofits to participate in fireworks. Ever since, I, I would believe the COVID-nineteen pandemic, that kind of, that kind of stifled the sales on fireworks. Since then, we've been slowly building that back up. But thirty-seven is a higher number than we had last year. We have thirty-one last year.
It was thirty-six.
We had thirty-six? Okay.
One more.
That's pretty close. What do we used to have? We, we had over forty.
But we used to have like forty, forty-five, um, you know, between forty and fifty.
So it was a couple of years ago when we, when we started dropping off and then.
Yes.
Yeah, it'd be nice to see those numbers come back up. Okay.
Question?
Yeah.
So, this program has been going on for decades. And um, it's uh quite apparent all across the city that there that these booths uh are, are pop- in other words, a good revenue source for nonprofits, been going on for many years. Um, and so any organization that wants to inquire, I mean, they don't have to go to the fireworks uh producers, they can come to the city and get the information.
Oh, absolutely.
So, I mean, nothing stops anybody from saying, you know what, I'd like to have my organization
Yes.
um, participate in that. And, and the other point I want to make is, uh, I've worked in fireworks booths before, and it is not fun.
They don't have air conditioner in there.
So, uh, it's hot. You're surrounded by things that might explode, even though safely. Um, but uh, before any organization wants to get involved with this, they, they really need to uh, check and see whether they will have the volunteers to staff the uh fireworks booth. Uh, there has to be security for the fireworks booth during the evening, uh, because we don't want people breaking in there and, you know, getting a free load of fireworks. Um, and uh, it is, it's, it's, it's quite a challenge. And so the organizations that participate year after year is because they have the experience and the knowledge and the personnel to uh, to actually be successful in these things. But it's open to any organization that qualifies under the standards of the City of Palmdale. And if, you know, if they can't access the fireworks uh safe and sane providers, they can always get the information from the city.
A lot, a lot of the groups camp out overnight the entire time so they can keep an eye on the, on the merchandise and the fireworks. They have trailers and campers, so you'll see them. It's quite the dedication. They actually live there for about a week.
Ms. Andrews, um, can the nonprofits find on our website the application, like, if, or, or the information about how to apply? Is it, um, is it on the city website? Cause I know you said it has to turn in by March?
Yes, it has to be in by March. I believe the fireworks permit application is online, but I will double check that. If it's not, I'll make sure it is on.
Okay.
For soon, yeah, for next year.
Okay, thanks.
Yes.
Okay, so I'm the one that does not like it. I think that fireworks in a hot, dry desert might not be such a great idea amongst other concerns. But every time I bring it up, I'm told this was voter-approved and there's nothing we can do about it. So can someone please explain that process? Why I can't throw a fit.
That what the, what the voters vote in have to vote out.
That what she said. Um, and any voter-based initiative.
And it's been brought before the voters a couple of times.
The only way to alter it is for the voters to themselves alter it.
And, and we've actually, um, sir, we've actually put it on, um, about a couple of times. No, no, just like, you know, we, we tried, cause I was like you, I, I, anything burning in the desert is not a good idea for me. Um, but what it does do, if it makes you feel any better, is every time somebody goes to a safe and sane booth and buys safe and sane, they're not buying the illegal stuff that's going in the air and landing in the field. So I try to look at it, the, the silver lining of that cloud, but um, I, I've always been a proponent of none, like you, but we can't do anything about it, so we have to make the best of what we have to work with.
It also provide, provides us funding for the enforcement of illegal fireworks.
Yes, it does.
And I bring it up because I hear other people, they have the same concern. They say, why are you doing it? And I just wanted that to be said.
And uh, one, one additional point I'd bring it up, third ear. The areas where safe and sane are not permitted, for example, the city of Los Angeles, is the worst offender in terms of illegal fireworks.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a nightmare. I, uh, my daughter lives down in LA. And they have to, they have to go out a long distance because their dogs simply go insane. And it's a, it's a, it's a severe problem. But safe and sane fireworks don't have anything to do with illegal fireworks. One thing doesn't promote, because otherwise we'd have all kinds of illegal fireworks, which we do have here in Palmdale, and I believe that we will be having some stern enforcement this year as we attempt every year. But in the areas where there is no safe and sane is the areas where you have more illegal fireworks being exploded. Not only on the Fourth of July, but for weeks before the Fourth of July and thereafter as well. So in a sense, this is not scientific by any uh stretch of the imagination, having safe and sane fireworks probably diminishes the need for illegal fireworks. So.
I agree. Um, just out of curiosity, that the map that you provided us, is this on the website for the public?
It will be tomorrow, once this gets approved.
You're right.
I'm ready. First thing on my to-do list tomorrow. It will be on the city's website. Uh, the map of all the organizations, the booths where they're located at.
So if a person wants to promote the music program at Highland High School, or the band, or a football team, they can actually go to a specific booth and that money will go to that organization. So check the map and shop where you want to support your, your folks.
Okay, and one final question with regard to the map. Where are the, how are the locations selected where the booths will be?
That is the representatives of TNT and Phantom. They make contracts with the owner of the property and get the, they secure the sites for the groups.
And so they secured thirty-seven sites. How are the, the organizations paired with the site?
Well, a lot of them have been doing the, this for many years and have the same site every year and do not change it. Um, but a- as far as how.
But they, it's not their choice to stay there, right?
I believe that the groups work with the distributors and, you know, if they want to stay there, they can.
They do. We have a local TNT representative, they're really close, but I've noticed over the years, they have their spots. These are a lot of the same groups, and you'll see them year after year, whether it's the Walmart parking lot, the dirt corner on Avenue Mouse. And wherever they have, there's definitely a formula to it.
And the reason why I ask is, um, there are certain locations, obviously, you know, close adjacent to, to the mall, or, you know, certain areas where there is a significant amount of revenue generated. So certain areas generate much more revenue than others. Um, and if the, the highest generating revenue locations are only with, you know, those that are, that have been there for ten years, that, they're not cycling, um, uh, you know, amongst all the various organizations. So I just a thought, in, in terms of the program next year, maybe we sort of rethink the application process, the outreach process, and how, uh, maybe the City of Palmdale has a more integral role rather than TNT kind of doing it all. That's all.
Thank you. I, I think that, that location's always been a problem for the nonprofits. I was a Girl Scout leader for decades. And making sure you have your booth where you want it can be sometimes very difficult because there are booths, locations that you will make a ton of money, and some that you'll make none of money. So I think it, it's standard for, for nonprofits to try to um pray for a lottery, or, or get getting ingrained into, you know, a, a spot and so anyways.
I guess that's my point, is that there is no lottery right now. It's sort of if you have a great spot and you can just stay there forever and, 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 you know, new organizations. So just maybe just some thought moving forward.
And keep in mind that the better spots like that have higher rent. So the organization is paying rent for that spot out of their profits. So that is something. And then the other thing is that uh, council voted um, many years ago, um, to help with the rent cost to, to help defer it for some, is that they can, there's a lottery for city property. So if they want to have their fireworks booth on one of the city properties, the parks, we have three this year, Marie Kerr, uh, Dominic Masari, and Yellen Park. So there's three groups that have their booths there. And they do not have to pay rent at all for that. That is something that the council members had voted in years ago.
Okay, well, maybe moving forward next year, we can have more thorough conversations. I, I, if there are no additional questions, I'd be happy to move the item.
I'll second it.
Can we make a motion, um, based on the, uh, advice from our city attorney? Can we make a motion to move all thirty-six of them except number thirty-one? Help for Heroes.
I want you to add number, uh, thirty, because I do sit on Saint Mary's Elementary.
Oh, you do?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, so let's, let's, thirty and the one you're.
Thirty-one and.
Thirty is Saint Mary's. Should we do that separately?
Yeah, let's do it separate. So I'll do mine first.
So I will withdraw my motion and revise my motion to adopt the fireworks permits for thirty-five of the locations excluding uh, location.
Thirty.
Thirty and.
Awesome.
And thirty-one.
Thirty and thirty-one.
And I'll second her modified motion.
We can vote on all the motions.
Yeah. To have a motion in a second. Go ahead and vote in the computer.
Motion passes.
Alright, now I will uh move to adopt items. Oh, are you guys leaving the room?
Let Richard go first, since he's number thirty.
We can take them, oh, you're gonna do them separate?
Yeah.
Alright.
Okay.
And yours is, which one's yours?
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one?
Thirty and thirty-one.
So I will move to adopt the permit for location number thirty, which is uh, Saint Mary's Catholic Church.
I'll second that motion.
Alright, we have motion second. Go ahead and vote. Alright, passes with four yes votes.
Alright, you'll switch.
I'll accuse myself for item number thirty-one, Help for Heroes.
So, you want, we want me to do the thirty-one and, okay.
So there's a motion now for number thirty-one?
Okay, so I'll make a motion to um adopt it, uh, number thirty-one.
Help for Heroes.
For Help for Heroes.
Oh, second that?
Alright, that moves us to item six X. Staff report?
Good evening, uh, mayor and city council. Eric Dombrowski, Deputy Director of Parks and Recreation. It's nice to see you this evening. Um, this item is to adopt ordinance number sixteen forty-two, approving uh various amendments to Title Two of the Palmdale Municipal Code. Um, the two items before you, number one would establish an alternate trustee for the Library Board of Trustees, which updates section two point three, two point oh four oh. And number two would be updating the powers and duties of the Library Board, which would be updating section two point three, two point zero six zero. Basically clarifying and confirming the key role of the Library Board would be in advisory capacity. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Um, so thank you for.
I'm gonna throw in one, um, looks like one of the computers hiccuped the last sentence in section three. That last sentence should go away. We'll clean that out.
The subsection B or the entire, in its entirety, or the last sentence?
Sentence of subsection of that section there.
What starts with this ordinance merely changes and establishes the period under which?
Correct.
Okay, so for the record, I'll just read, read that sentence uh into the record. We are striking from section three, subsection B. This ordinance merely changes and establishes the period under which it does not authorize any construction that would not. that would not already have been analyzed under CEQA and is within the scope of the city charter. Is that it?
That's it.
All right. Um so thank you for your report. A- as was noted by our public commenter, I um I I really don't want to stifle and have no intention of stifling um the functionality of the Library Board. My, the reason why I pulled this item was to point out to my colleagues um an an area where we might uh be interested in amending the municipal code moving forward. So the municipal code moving for uh uh, the current municipal code provides that the mayor appoints all five uh positions on the Library Board. I believe that that municipal code was established when our mayor was uh elected at large, elected citywide. Uh we have five council districts, there are five seats on the Library Board. I think now it is time for us to reconsider, or at least consider at this juncture, uh a revision to the municipal code to allow for one appointment per council district as opposed to the mayor uh appointing all five, especially given that the mayor rotates on an annual basis. Um we don't know when these appointments are going to come up and when trustees are going to retire and whatnot. So I just would like it to be consistent um with our electoral process as well as the majority of how all of our other commissions are appointed. So.
If we might address that a moment. Um we looked at that, as was articulated, each of you get one. And we also looked at the uh education code that specifically addresses library boards and trustees. And what that says, the public library shall be managed by a board of library trustees consisting of five members to be appointed by the mayor, president of the board of trustees, or other executive head of the municipality with the consent of the legislative body of the municipality. As we discussed it amongst staff, the thought was keeping the library more consistent with the education code in this authority. You can go either way. You can do it one uh per district, you can go this. This was not an unconscious thought and um that's our story and we're sticking with it.
And I just, in response to um y- your recitation of the education code, it says specifically the head of the municipality. The the position of mayor, because it's rotating, uh we are all equally empowered on this council. So there is no head of the municipality other than this city council as a body. Uh so I just, so.
So so maybe we can let each council person make a recommendation to the current mayor at the time. Or um the other question that I had Andrea for your motion, we have a very hard time getting people to apply for positions. Uh we might get five people out of one district apply. Um so would the council people have to choose someone from their district or can we just choose from the list?
So so similar to the Human Rights Commission, um there are provisions that allow for um somebody with a specific area of expertise citywide. Um they could reside in the district or have a specific area of expertise. And we could frame the ordinance how we'd like, uh but I I mean, we can't do it now today. And we're gonna appoint uh to add, create the alternate position so that the Library Board is functional moving forward like as of today. But I'm just saying, you know, over over the course of the next few months, maybe we should reconsider how the Library Board is appointed.
It would be difficult to get, I mean, it'd be ideal to get each person from your own district appointed, but it's it's easier said than done with the.
And and it's long overdue to have an alternate, as as the rally said, that we can't, we can't run it short continuously. We have to have some backup for somebody if they get sick or retire or move away. So having an alternate is really, really important.
A little bit more flexibility and okay.
So can we make a motion to approve this tonight, but then ask staff to take a peek at not just this, but any of the other commissions or committees where maybe uh not every member up here has had a chance to appoint, or just general cleanup of all the commissions and committees?
Your pleasure, absolutely, we can. And that's not part of the uh motion.
But the motion is.
So uh so I will, I didn't actually make the formal motion, but I will move to, if there's no further discussion about the 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 ordinance moving forward, I will make the motion to approve the item as presented by staff.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. And go ahead and vote.
With that, I just want to say thank you for being here. Thank you for your service. Please extend our our regards to all of the other members. Uh is everybody here? Oh, wow, can you stay?
Anything else you'd like to say? Okay, great.
Thank you. Congratulations. You guys are gonna get a new member and an alternate.
All right, moving on. Uh item seven one, public hearing. City clerk, can you please read the title of ordinance sixteen forty-one into the record, please?
And ordinance of the city council of the city of Palmdale, California, recommending city council approval of general plan amendment twenty-four dash zero 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 one, zoning ordinance amendment twenty-four dash zero 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 three, and zone change twenty-four dash zero 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 one. A request to amend the general plan, zoning ordinance, and land use map.
And zoning map to address inconsistencies and finding that the project is considered with program environmental impact report twenty-two dash zero zero two, prepared and certified in conjunction with the city's general plan.
All right, at this time, do we have a motion or a second, or an and second to introduce the ordinance?
Move to move to introduce the ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Staff report. Hey Brenda.
Hey, good evening, mayor and council. The item before you is ordinance sixteen forty-one, which includes a general plan amendment, zone change, and zoning ordinance amendment. Since the recent adoption of the general plan and zoning ordinance, staff has been working closely with the development community to ensure efficiency and flexibility within our city codes. If you flip to exhibit A in your packet, um this includes the zoning ordinance amendments that will amend the density ranges for health and wellness to fall in line with educational flex zone. And another notable thing to point out is that we added some language to uh the minor exceptions related to parking and density. If you turn to exhibit B, uh you'll see that you have six maps related to general plan land use and zoning map changes. This concludes my presentation and I'm available for any questions.
Counsel, do you have any questions?
Just a comment. Uh it appears that uh there's been ongoing discussions uh between uh development, economic development and uh various developers. And I believe we've obtained uh letters of support for this particular amendment.
Right, yeah.
It's supported by that and uh my, is this part of that discussion? Does it remedy any of that, or is that still a separate and ongoing issue that needs to be resolved?
So that, it does remedy a lot of the concerns. It is still an ongoing conversation. As we've all um come to realize, this is a a living document and as projects come to fruition, uh we have been making sure that we're flexible, making sure that there's a way to say yes.
To address some, but not all. And then, okay.
Those are still ongoing discussions. So as we get um projects online, we'll be working with them to make sure that we can say yes.
Okay. Okay, do we have any other questions?
Does the um future prospect of us taking control of Palmdale Boulevard from Caltrans affect any of these partial changes that we're talking about?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have to do a separate motion or?
Well, if nobody else has anything up here, then I'm gonna open the public hearing and we'll receive some public testimony if there's any. I'm clerk.
No public speaker card on this item.
All right, no public speaker card. So I'm gonna close the public hearing for a final council discussion or uh entertain a motion second to adopt ordinance sixteen forty-one.
Move to adopt ordinance sixteen forty-one.
Mayor Protonwella.
I'll second it.
Multiple seconds. Go ahead and vote in the computer.
Start voting. Motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Seven two, VMT. This is a fun one. City clerk, please read the title resolution CC twenty twenty-four thirty-one into the record, please.
A resolution of the city council of the city of Palmdale to establish a vehicle miles traveled VMT program, which includes VMT thresholds, VMT analysis requirements and program, and establishes two new city fees, a VMT analysis fee, analysis fee, and a VMT impact fee.
All right. Staff report. Hi Lynn.
Hi, good evening, council and council members. My name is Lynn Glidden, Director of Public Works. I actually will be having Jay Nelson, who is zooming in, and also a representative from Kim Lee Horn, to present the VMT program.
There are VMT experts, right?
Yes, I'd rather have them talk than myself.
Thank you. Hey Jay.
I'm Jay Nelson, the city traffic manager. Um sorry, can't be there in person today, but um just wanted to, uh we we selected Kim Lee Horn as our consultant. Uh they've been experts in developing VMT programs throughout the state. And the flat, I will turn it over to Michael and he will do the presentation. We'll both be available to answer questions after that if needed.
Great, thank you Jay. Good evening, mayor and council members. Um next slide, please. Okay, great, thank you. Uh so I'm first gonna start just by giving an overview of SB seven forty-three. So SB seven forty-three is specific to the California Environmental Quality Act. And it is the basis for making a transportation significant impact determination. So basically, if you go through the environmental process, this establishes how you make that determination. Um SB seven forty-three seeks to re-improve sustainability and reduce greenhouse gases by promoting denser rainfall development, reducing single occupancy vehicles, and improving mass transit. It went into full effect on July first, twenty twenty, until, and to date, the uh the city of Palmdale has been using the Los Angeles County VMT guidelines. The most recent state guidelines are from December twenty eighteen. And it recommends that each land use within a development gets split out and analyzed identically. And then the basic metric is vehicle miles traveled, which is basically a measure of the number of vehicles that travel some distance. Next slide, please. So just quickly, I'm gonna show you an example of how we look at VMT. So this is, I'm looking at a home. So we're talking about residential VMT. And in reality, we would analyze this as many houses, not but one. But just for our example, I'm gonna talk from the standpoint of one house. So you imagine over the course of the day, that residents of this home make trips to school, to shopping, to work, and then return, make tr- return trips back. The way we basically analyze that is we take the number of vehicle miles traveled, so that distance times the number of trips, and we divide through by the occupants. So in this example, there's three people that live there. We get a per capita VMT and we compare that to a threshold. And that is how we determine whether there's a significant impact for CEQA. And next slide. So now I'm gonna step you through how the proposed uh program works. The first step for an applicant coming in will be to find their pro- their their project in land use terms that we're used to using in transportation. And the basis we use is called the Institute of Transportation Engineers. It's a way that all folks that work in transportation are familiar with, a lingo. And so it's defined in those terms. We at that point identify if it's a mixed-use project because mixed-use projects do get some benefit by keeping trips on-site. And then we'll also identify if it's a redevelopment project, which we then evaluate during step two. Next slide. So during step two, we screen for reasons that we can make a determination that there is not a significant fact or impact. So that's just based on the facts. Um the first way we do that is if a project produces less than three thousand metric tons of CO2, basically greenhouse gases. Um the second is if it's within a half mile of high-quality transit. Um that means that it must be operating in fifteen-minute headways in both the AM and the PM. Um if it's affordable housing, we make a determination that it's not, has not had significant impact. If it's a local essential service, so it's something that like a dentist's office or something, you would have to um travel to anyways, and if it's being brought closer to you. We've got map-based screening, I'm gonna show you maps in a moment. And then in a redevelopment situation, if the new project is less than an existing project, we make a determination that it's not a significant impact. Next slide. So in the steps three, we basically identified what the threshold of significance is. And this is an important part of any CEQA process, is what are we analyzing against? And we've made these determinations using the city's travel demand model. And you can see each land use type has its own threshold and its own basis. So the city's adopt, is looking to adopt a four percent below the existing north Los Angeles County average VMT. So that's a recommendation as part of the new program. Next slide. Um these are just maps that show how that threshold will affect the area. Um basically, you're looking at residential VMT on this screen. And basically, if you're, if you're kind of focusing in the green areas, are areas that we know are under the threshold. So if the new home goes in those areas, it's safe to assume that it would not have an impact. The yellow areas are gonna have an impact between uh one and fifteen percent above the threshold of significance, and the red areas will be above that. And obviously, the yellow and the red areas will be required to try to mitigate their impact. Uh next slide. Now, this slide shows us employment. So the first one I showed you was residential. This shows you employment. You can see most of the city is in a green area, so there's the assumption that it wouldn't have a significant impact. And similarly, the yellow and red denote areas that are above the threshold. Next slide. So steps four and five, I've kind of combined just to simplify the presentation. Basically, during this, these steps, a scope would be drawn up, so the city would review the scope. And applicant would say, here's how I'm going to analyze it, or here's how I propose to analyze it. Um in most instances, that would result in running something called Treadlight. It's a software package that greatly eases and lowers the cost of doing VMT analysis. And the city would do that and charge a nominal fee relatively for that analysis. And then based on the outcome of that, there would be a determination as to what mitigation measures are necessary to try to offset any significant impacts as per CEQA. Uh next slide. Just want to highlight that the first line of mitigations is typically what we call transportation demand management. Um basically, it's solutions that are, most often, these are really employment-based solutions. So it's things like van pools, shuttles, commute reduction programs, riding transit, you know, providing free bus passes, those types of things. And like I said, mostly these work well for employers. So this is pretty much the first line that an applicant can do. Uh next. Um as part of the program, we're also introducing a mitigation bank. The idea of a mitigation bank is if an applicant can't find another way to mitigate um their project, whether through site-specific improvements like mixed use or through transportation demand measures, they can participate in this program. And basically, the idea of the program is that they can fund, they can pay to buy credits commensurate with what their impact is, to basically construct VMT-reducing projects across the city to essentially create mitigation. And I want to highlight that this isn't required that they participate in this program. It only, it's just an option if they need mitigation and can't come up with solutions on their own. If there are, if they don't have an impact, they certainly wouldn't have to participate in this product, this program. Um and basically, the program would work, the city would collect the money, and then it would construct the projects that are mostly active transportation and a park and ride lot in the first generation of projects. Uh next slide. So the final step of any um CEQA process is mitigation monitoring. It's a requirement. So the program does include mitigation monitoring. Um it does leave flexibility so that the the right type of mitigation monitoring can be determined for an individual project. You know, one way to do that is a trip cap, or if a project has a significant impact, we measure over time how many trips go across something like a pneumatic tube. It's like the tubes you see in the roadway that we use to count traffic. Um it's typically included, it is a condition of approval. And often, there's a, there's a time where we analyze that and at some point we say, okay, we can settle that this is on an ongoing basis, we expect that this mitigation is is meeting the needs of the of the project. Uh next slide. And just finally, I can pass it back to uh the recommended action. I'll just read it. Uh we recommend that the city council adopt a resolution number twenty forty, twenty twenty-four oh thirty-one to establish a VMT program that includes a VMT analysis fee and a VMT impact fee of two hundred and sixty-one dollars per VMT over the adopted threshold. Thank you.
Is that the report?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Counsel, any questions? Any comments? Lynn?
No, there's no comments. Unless you have any questions, I'd like Jay to get back up on online.
Okay. As far as it's been explained to me, this is a very business-friendly version of what um we're we're accommodating for VMT as far as the future building and development. It's not gonna hinder anything and the thresholds are actually lower than that of cities nearby.
Correct.
Okay.
So my my question was, um have have we spoke with our developers and how do they feel about this?
I'm gonna go back to Jay, please.
Because they have to pay this impact fee. Cause they have to pay this impact fee.
Yes, the developers are required to pay.
Don't turn that camera off yet, Jay.
Yes, we 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 have met with a few of the developers and 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 we basically are preparing a way where they can actually build a project without some kind of mitigation program. We're we're almost making it impossible for some residential development to sit.
Council, if I may, we have met with some of our key developers here in the city of Palmdale and gone over this analysis with them directly, and we have found support across the board.
So we have buy-in from from the community developers. Okay, that's important because we don't wanna set anything in a motion that's gonna hinder anything. Uh do we have any other questions or um worse is that? So um at this point.
The um threshold that we're adopting is the four percent threshold.
Yes.
That's part of this.
Yes.
Okay, so why don't we open the public hearing and receive testimony if there is any? Madam Clark?
There are no speaker cards on this item.
All right, seeing none. I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. Back to council. Oh, we got one. We're open. Yeah, go ahead and turn it in and then.
Hi, good evening.
Hello.
Hi, my name is Marsha. Um I oppose that. I just wanna say I oppose any other fees that are involved in developing for the developers who want to remain here in Palmdale. I think it's crucial that we all recognize that there are people who want to build in Palmdale who are being left out. And every time you add a little bit more and you have to analyze this and that, it becomes difficult for them. So I don't know who these people are that have said, I'm in line with it, I'll do it. Um and I'd like to know who those people are.
All right.
Thank you.
Do we have any other comments? All right, seeing none.
If if I don't know if it's our city attorney or if one of our staff members could just maybe re-edit re um.
We have to do this, right?
Right, just 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 restate why S what SB uh seven forty-three is and and where it came from and why we have to do this.
It's not something we're doing on our own.
Uh you you you're all right. This is, again, thank you Sacramento for kind of stripping a little bit more local control and and giving a little bit more command and control coming down from the state. Uh the California Environmental Quality Act of nineteen seventy has amended is intended to make sure the environmental quality of life of the whole state is preserved to the maximum extent possible. For decades, um there had been fairly consistent methodology of traffic analysis for any development, conditional use permits, what have you. And that level of traffic generation, um I'll say as with any metric, any form of analysis, uh the experts over time said that older strategy isn't as effective as going to VMT, vehicle miles traveled. Vehicle miles traveled is believed to give a more accurate uh analysis of the impacts on a region uh from vehicles and to give greater opportunities to mitigate those. You you've just heard several of the the different ways to mitigate it. And what the state did was say, okay, we want statewide uniformity on how development impact environmentally is analyzed as to vehicle travel. And that resulted in VMT, which uh as you've seen, has a a level of complexity to it that we are grateful there's engineers and computer models that know how to to analyze it all. I suppose we could ask Lynn to run through the calculations, but she'd probably uh reject the request, so. Uh again, in short, it is the the state's further effort to ensure air quality and to to whatever degree local quality of life is preserved and we we don't have an option to have it or not. Uh we have options to make it more or less friendly. Um as was noted, the structure that Palmdale is selecting, or that's been recommended, is viewed as being most friendly to the development community. And to that end, it's seen as business-friendly. We have to have something, so staff is with Kim Lee Horn, the consultants, has generated what they believe is both practical but as light of a practicality as can be done. You could go a lot fiercer. Um that would, as the the speaker noted, probably drive away uh some developers. The development community is very aware of VMT. I mean, this is no surprise. It's been kicking around now a couple of years. And if anything, um I guess I will suggest to you the silence of the development community here. Uh some cities I've seen BIA will show up raging, uh local developers will show up. You're you're not having any opponents, which um I guess the best way to conclude is they've seen what you've done, or what you may do. They deem it reasonable under the circumstances and probably are grateful it's not worse.
All right, thanks Phil. Council members.
Add one more point, that us not passing this or implementing this is actually holding up developments because it is required by the state. For example, you know the ADU conversation we've been having over the last several weeks in my district and the upset neighbors? When I talked with the developer, he wanted to do fair market housing, but he couldn't. One of the exceptions to this VMT is if all units are a hundred percent affordable, which is why he chose that project instead of a fair market project. So us not doing this prevents quality development that we're looking for.
All right, do we have a?
One last one last point, just for transparency purposes, since this is a formal public hearing, the the PowerPoint presentation says that the council recommended action is to e- establish one fee, the two sixty-one VMT fee, but it makes no reference to the second fee, the six hundred dollar fee, so I just wanna make sure that we're clear and the public is fully aware that there are two fees that are recommended to be approved um under the the staff report. The six hundred dollar per project VMT analysis fee, as well as the VMT impact fee of two sixty-one.
Okay. City manager, is that a motion?
The the staff report mentions both fees, yes.
Okay. All right, so at this time, do we have a motion?
I'll move.
Okay. And a second?
One second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Let's go ahead and vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you very much. So before we move on to seven three, I'm gonna ask the council if we can take a brief restroom break? And we'll reconvene. All right. See you back at seven ten. Yeah. Okay, and we're back. Item seven three, city clerk, can you please read the title of resolution CC twenty twenty-four dash oh fifty-four into the record, please?
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Palmdale ordering the detachment of parcels from the City of Palmdale Landscape Maintenance Assessment Districts and Annexations, Park Maintenance and Recreation Improvement District and Street Light Maintenance Assessment Districts and Annexations.
Okay, yeah, made on the report. Lynn, you're back.
Good evening, Lynn Glidden, Director of Public Works. Uh this resolution before you tonight um basically is removing parcels that are currently in our LMD and our Street Light Assessment Districts that are now going to be part of the CFD for Ritter Ranch. So at the time, um this the city created a CFD for Ritter Ranch, and a CFD is authorized to levy and collect special taxes for certain maintenance ser- services which were given or which were meant to replace the city's existing Maintenance Assessment Districts. Um as such, the parcels included in the CFD are asked to be detached from our Landscape Maintenance Assessment Districts, Park Maintenance and Recreation Improvement District, and also the Street Light Maintenance District. Um this is action will eliminate the potential for duplication of funding by removing parcels from the Maintenance Assessment Districts and including them in with the CFD. And available for any questions.
Okay, so this is basically cleanup.
It's just basically cleanup, yes.
All right, um we're gonna open public hearing and receive a public testimony at this time. Do we have any members?
There are no speaker cards on this item, Mayor.
Okay, seeing none. At this time, we will close the public hearing and follow up with council discussion. Council, do we have any questions, or I'll entertain a motion to approve?
Second?
I have a motion and second. Let's go ahead and vote.
Start voting. Motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you very much. Item seven four, city clerk, please read the title of resolution CC twenty twenty-four.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Palmdale ordering the detachment of parcels from the City of Palmdale Drainage Benefit Assessment District number two zero zero six dash zero two.
So good evening, I'm here back again. Um this is basically the same item as before, only it deals with our drainage benefit assessment districts. And it's pulling the same parcels out.
Okay.
From the Ritter Ranch, from this yet.
Okay, kind of a con- same thing continue more.
Same thing continuing, it's only a different assessment district.
Got it. So do we have any uh members of the public wishing to speak on this item?
No, Mayor, we do not.
Seeing none at this time, so we're gonna close the public hearing, council discussion, or approval. We have a motion.
Second?
We have a second. Go ahead and vote in the computer.
Start voting.
Passes unanimously. All right, thank you very much. Thank you, Lynn. All right, that takes us to item eight one, that's appointments, the nomination and appointment of one public member to the audit committee. Do uh do we have anybody here that applied? That would wish to speak? Anyone? Seeing none. Uh do we have any motions?
I'd like to nominate Cynthia Zalaya from District one.
Okay.
I'd like to nominate uh Laura Rose from District three. Laura Rose from District three would be my selection.
Okay, we only have one appointment. So how do we vote about that? Should we vote on Richards?
Well, he need either motion needs a second, so I'll second um Mayor Protemlo's nomination.
Okay, we'll vote on uh the Mayor Protem nomination, that's Cynthia Zalaya first, so we have a motion and a second. Let's go ahead and vote on it.
And and just it is if there is, so that the public knows, part of the reason why I'm I'm seconding um his nomination is uh Ms. Zalaya is a resident of the city of Palmdale. She has an associate's degree in accounting. She has a bachelor's degree for in business administration uh and a accounting, so she's she's duly qualified to serve in on the audit committee. In the in our municipal code, it specifies that ideally um it would be a CPA, but if not a CPA, um then somebody who has accounting, uh you know, qualifications. And it it seemed, based on my assessment, of all of those that lived within the city of Palmdale, that Ms. Zalaya was the only qualified person.
I would I would have to agree with that, and I was appreciative of all of our applicants. It was a very difficult decision. We had very qualified applicants. Um but yeah, we had excellence, this it's hard making a lot of tough choices.
Appreciate your your comments. Uh as far as Ms. Zalaya is concerned, um I agree. Uh she has some strong credentials that were presented in the application. Strong credentials uh in Ms. Zalaya's application. Um and in looking at the at the rest of them, it does make it a a difficult thing, but I believe in my opinion, Ms. Zalaya does stand out uh as being um a good asset to uh to the audit committee.
Start voting. Motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you very much. All right, eight two, appointments, approve reappointments to library board. So do we have council discussion, or do we all move in second to reappoint Deborah Rutowski-Hines and Dolores J. Morris, library board?
Move to uh reappoint.
We have a motion? We have a motion for the bathroom. We have a second from Councilmember Olson. Let's go ahead and vote.
Start voting. Motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you very much. Item number nine point one, new business. Consider and approve the execution of the first amendment to the city manager appointment agreement. Update terms of agreement. No change in base salary. Uh do we have a staff report? To elaborate, City Attorney Curly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and publicly. Um the city managers just up to about a year and a half of of tenure. My underst- My understanding that she's been well received by the council and there is, uh, the intent to both, let's say, support the, the council's uh, directives under the Code of Conduct as far as being respectful and being uh, appropriate in all actions, as well as, uh, giving assurances, kind of building in that same envelope of, uh, critical review to give her a, uh, the assurance of a four-one termination. Um, that raises it by one, but it allows staff, not only her, but uh, all the, the subsidiary staff to realize council has vested trust in your city manager and is quite approving of her performance. And with the upcoming, uh, year and they pass the sign under the budget and in general, uh, she will be carrying them out with a flourish. And this just sort of updates and brings into, again, I'll call it the context of, of respect and appreciation of the council letting the manager know, letting the community know that she's doing a good job and you want her to continue.
So it helps bring stability to the organization.
Absolutely.
Without providing any kind of negative financial impact.
And, yeah, it doesn't touch on economics, um, salaries not changing, it's far more, uh, a confirmation of the council's support and trust in her leadership for the city.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, um, just a, a reminder of the time that, um, Ms. Perez came into, uh, the role first as, uh, interim city manager, um, and then, uh, eventually, uh, becoming the city manager. The city was fraught with dissension. Uh, we had just gone through a very difficult time with, uh, massive litigation that was brought by, uh, former employees of the city. And, um, first of all, I, I, I was really impressed with, with her, aside from, from her skills in terms of trying to, um, you know, attempting to, to have the city calm down, is the way I would put it. Uh, because of everything that was going on. And, uh, that was the first, the first impression that I had. The second was her humility. I thought that, because she was assigned to an office uh, away from the city manager's office, the previous city manager still had possessions there. But I felt that in terms of a symbol to, not only to our staff but to the city, that leadership was going to continue in the city manager's, uh, position, that she should move into that office. And she would not do that. And, um, I urged it to do that because I thought it would be a strong symbol for bringing stability to our staff, to our city, and then to also assist us in providing a direction in dealing with, with all of the litigation that was going on. And eventually she did move in there. But I think that the shining example, you know, the shining thing that most, uh, stands out in my mind is that she was able to, through her leadership, through her skills, through her ability, and perhaps the feminine touch, um, to bring stability among our staff and get unity behind her. I am wholeheartedly in favor of this motion. And I hope the council will approve this.
With the piggyback on that, I will say that Ms. Perez came in during a very, very difficult time, uh, during COVID. And those are very turbulent times for, for everyone, for all cities across the entire nation, but through those difficult times, she's been able to navigate and get this, uh, organization to stabilize and get us back on a better track where we've been, uh, able to grow again and uh, be able to get in a better place, so to speak, as a, as a city, as an organization, we've actually kicked off a couple very large projects, uh, because of her leadership and her staff that I'm very proud of. One of them being built right now, that is a very large product, uh, project that you were uh, a big part of, so for that, I, I thank you and, and, um, you have my support, if, if you need the extra support or disability, uh, as, as a council member, as a mayor, you have it for me. Anybody else? Seeing none? Uh, all?
I'll move to approve the item.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Let's go ahead and vote.
No, there's no comment on this one, right?
I believe.
I think so, there we go. No, it was included in the, uh.
Motion passes unanimously.
Congratulations, Ms. Perez.
All right. Item number ten, City Manager's report.
Thank you, Council, um, it is definitely a group effort here at the city, and I am so proud of this staff and how far we've come in the last couple of years and, uh, I appreciate the support, but without them, it wouldn't be happening, so as much a congratulations to them and all their hard work. Upcoming events, we continue to have the city's farmers market every Friday. Uh, please go out and enjoy that, uh, weather permitting, some days it's a little blustery out there, but, um, always a good time and good music and good entertainment. We will celebrate the AV Taco Festival this weekend here at Ponsett Lawn Square on June eighth from eleven to seven, so make sure you come out and be a part of that. Seasons of service, park beautification, we invite you to come out and help us beautify Marie Kerr Park on June fifteenth. Palmdale Sheriff's Station will be, uh, hosting a gun buyback event on June fifteenth as well. Uh, I think our captain's gonna speak a little bit more about that in a moment. And to top off, uh, between now and our next council meeting, we will celebrate Juneteenth on Wednesday, June ninth, June nineteenth at Ponsett Lawn Square. A couple other items of note, our summer concert series is nearly upon us, so make sure you get your tickets and be part of our July fourth celebration as well, we'll be kicking it off then. Our new city website, um, it's not a full rebuild of the website, but a refresh is gonna be launched on June sixth, so it's gonna look a little bit different, hopefully it's a lot more user friendly. Over two hundred pages have been updated on our website, it had over four hundred and fifty active pages. Um, we have completely sort of revamped and cleaned up and looked at all the click-through metrics and where people are visiting and where they're not, tried to make it much more user friendly. So that's a first step, uh, towards a website, uh, renewal. And then our park and recreation youth scholarships for summer are open for recreation, Drytown Water Park, Rec Swim, and swim safety, so make sure that you take advantage of that, should anybody need support to be able to participate in any of our programs. That's the end of my report.
All right, thank you very much.
Yeah, should I just go first and then, oh, you wanna go with that, huh?
We have the sheriff's report.
Oh, oh, man.
So Council, uh, if I may, just real quickly, a couple months ago, it was requested that we start getting regular updates from our uh, Palmdale Sheriff's Captain, so he's gonna start joining us at the first meeting of every month and provide some statistics, this is really the first one, so we'll, we'll do a little bit of feeling out here and seeing exactly what you're looking for, and then we'll dial it in in future months, but he's got some stats to show.
Come on down, item number ten, Sheriff's Report, let's.
You know, and as part of the, uh, NCTC, North County Transportation Committee, uh, we do have reports, uh, from the various law enforcement agencies for the North County. And it's in that vein that, uh, you know, we're asking that you provide us a report of, um, Sheriff's Department here in the City of Palmdale.
Absolutely.
I asked for a criminal justice committee, this was the compromise.
Compromise is always good.
That doesn't mean it's still out of the question.
Well, good evening, Mayor Bishop, Mayor Protemloa, Councilmembers, uh, Bettencourt, Alarcon, and Olson, and City Manager Perez. Happy to report our current contract service compliance percentage through the month of May is at ninety-seven point eight eight percent. Uh, the goal is usually ninety-eight percent to ninety-nine percent, the month of June will put us back in the track for that compliance percentage. Um, this has been accomplished with a ten deputies vacancies and zero CARP shifts in the city, so no CARPing is happening in the city at, at this moment. In fact, I have reduced the usage of CARP shifts for our hardworking detectives and have a goal of eliminating the use of CARP altogether in the future. Most likely in the next couple of months. Through the month of May, our rolling average for response times to routine calls for service is at a hundred and twenty-four minutes per routine call. This is, uh, a, a, a benefit compared to last year, which was a hundred and forty-seven minutes per call year-to-date last year, okay? In that same period, uh, we had a twenty-one thousand and sixty-eight calls for service this year so far, compared to twenty thousand two hundred and twenty-five calls last year. So an increase of eight hundred, eight hundred and forty-three calls, or four percent, so we're actually handling more calls this year and getting there faster than last year. Uh, in the month of May, we did experience an uptick in response times with an average routine response rate of a hundred and thirty-five minutes, but we also experienced our highest call volume for the year at four thousand six hundred and fifteen calls for service, an increase of five hundred and eighty calls compared to April. So more calls, little bit more time to get there. Uh, we were working diligently with the city staff to decrease wasteful call volumes such as false alarm calls, as well as to efficiently unify, utilize resources to ensure quality service in a timely manner.
How many false alarms, uh, do you have a report on the number of false alarms that were being received and responded to?
I have the data, but not with me, but I could report back on it.
But it was, it was quite a considerable number.
I did the research for last year, we had roughly about nine thousand alarm calls per service in the whole station area.
So most of those were just false alarms that were going.
Alarms and the majority of them were false, yes.
Can I ask a question?
Are you done with your report?
No, I'm not.
Oh, I thought you, you, you put your papers together, so I just thought you were.
On page two, thank you. Uh, in terms of Part One crimes, we are currently averaging three hundred and eighteen Part One crimes per month in the city. Uh, Part One crimes include murders, rapes, assaults, robberies, burglaries, thefts, and arson. Based on preliminary data through the month of May, it appears crimes against persons are down there nearly four percent for the year compared to last year. This includes murders, rapes, and assaults, however, we're continuing to experience an increase of twenty-one percent in property crimes. These are driven mostly by auto thefts and retail thefts. With that said, the preliminary data from May shows a marked decrease in auto theft of twenty-nine percent compared to April, so some of our efforts are actually making headway on, uh, reducing auto theft. Uh, crimes trend, crime trend data and community input are utilized on a weekly basis to drive crime strategy in combating these crimes. The use of technologies such as flock cameras has proven to be very effective in combating auto theft, we also partner often with countywide resources such as the Retail Theft Task Force, which happens to be working on the inside the night doing undercover operations, as well as the Regional Auto Theft Task Force. Uh, during the month of May, we had three hundred and forty arrests in the city. Lastly, traffic enforcement and collision prevention are also critical to our success in protecting the public. We are currently averaging a hundred and sixty-two collisions per month, those are reported collisions. Uh, with an, which is an increase of twenty-two percent compared to last year, but no increase in fatal collisions. However, we also have had a twenty-seven percent increase in traffic citations during the same period. Um, we had four thousand and forty sites this year so far compared to three thousand one hundred and eighty-two last year, so it's a marked improvement in citations. We've also seen a slight increase in DUI arrests with ninety-seven this year compared to ninety-five last year. And to touch on what, uh, Ms. Perez said earlier, we are having a gun buyback event. Gift card event, gift cards will be given out for guns, it's, uh, at Ponsett Lawn Square on June fifteenth, starting at nine AM. Uh, folks need to show up with the guns unloaded inside the trunk. There's an amnesty to it, there's no questions asked, if the gun is stolen and found out to be stolen, it will be returned to the owner, otherwise it'll be destroyed. Uh, the gift card amounts is fifty dollars for an inoperable gun, hundred dollars for a regular gun, two hundred dollars for a ghost gun, and three hundred dollars for an assault weapon. So that ends my report today, thank you.
Thank you for your report, this is really informative, um, just one suggestion moving forward, I started to try to take lots of notes, I know we get these reports, um, you know, with graphs and whatnot on a, on a quarterly basis, I believe it is.
Yes.
Um, maybe moving forward, we could have some sort of written something or other so that we can at least have the highlights, so that we're not frantically trying to write,
Absolutely.
write everything down, um, and then you noted, i- if I heard you correctly, that the, the response time for a routine call is a hundred and thirty-five minutes?
For the last month in May, in, in May. But we've been averaging a hundred and twenty-four for the year so far.
Right, um, s- and what is the, the target response time for a, a routine call?
The accepted practice of the Sheriff's Department is sixty minutes, however, that is typically in the very urban areas, not in an area that's seven hundred and seventy square miles, which we patrol.
So in our area, what, what you're?
My goal, my current goal is to get it below ninety minutes.
And you said we're at a hundred and thirty-five in May, a hundred and twenty-four annually, uh, there are ten vacancies, I heard you, did, that were currently.
There are ten vacancies attributed to the city staffing for the City of Palmdale.
Vacancies, um, so if we were to fill those ten vacancies, do you think that we could get it down to that ninety?
To be honest with you, it, it, it's not a matter of personnel, because if the body's not there, it's being filled via overtime, so it's not a matter of people being out in the streets, it's a matter of management and call volume and making sure folks get there, and to be honest with you, if we get a call for service that's related to a murder or some type of like high propensity type of call for service, and it takes a lot of resource draw, that's what causes a lot of the response times to drive up. If we're all situated on one type of call for service, the other calls are waiting, that what, that's what causes the backlog in our average response times.
So the, the level of catastrophe per call
Sometimes.
also dictates the response time for routine calls.
Priority calls, I guess, or what do they, uh?
There's priority and emergent calls, emergent calls are seven minutes, uh, routine calls are twenty minutes. But I'll give you an example, yesterday I got a, a message from a concerned citizen saying, hey, I think my car got stolen, and I've been waiting a couple hours for somebody to show up and take the report. I get hold of the watch commander, and not only had we had a person arrested for committing violence, we had another, uh, person that was found to be dead inside a home, we had another person fall in the jail with a, with a chest pain, so you're, you're managing several different incidents at once, and we only have so many resources to dedicate to, so then you have to prioritize which things you get to first and second and third, of course.
So I just wanna say thank you for the report, this is a new addition to our agendas, um, and, but I also wanna say thank you for your lea- your new leadership
Thank you.
uh, at the station, you've clearly made some improvements, uh, in the very short period of time that, that you've been empowered, uh, at that station, so I just wanna say thank you and commend you for what you've done.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I had a question, um, you were able to reduce the CARPing.
Yes.
How did you achieve that?
Made it on my own decision.
Okay.
Ultimately, I got a hold of my commander, I said, hey, we have X amount of vacancies, our detective bureau, they're burnt out, I need to make sure they handle their cases. I'm gonna make this decision, and we're gonna go forward from it. It increases a little bit the overtime overall, however, the deputies that are now not having a CARP are able to handle their cases, and the equivalent of the CARP is basically two detectives for me. So it's either I take from the line and turn them into detectives, or I stop CARPing.
What is the, uh, average amount of overtime that a deputy is doing?
Currently, it's at six per month, six shifts.
Six shifts per month?
Yes.
Yeah, but I mean, my concern is their for, their fatigue, for their own safety, for liability to the city. I mean, I know it's a, a countywide problem, but that is a huge concern.
Absolutely, and I, I will tell you that I, I look at our deployment weekly and where we capture our minutes to make sure there's no waste and there's no, um, minutes being lost anywhere, so that way I ensure I take the minimum amount of people out there every day to get what we need. So that way, we're, I'm not hiring extra overtime for nothing.
So it's at six overtime now, what was it before, cause it was higher?
It's been in the, i- it varies, right, I've seen it as high as seven, eight, people working in the jails are working ten to twelve shifts. We've had it down to four or five, the, the problem is right now it's summertime, people are on vacation, so that what's causes, right before summer is around five.
Okay.
I have a couple of comments and questions, first of all,
Yes, sir.
we're about to reach a milestone at the, uh, Palmdale Station, that, that would be a, a celebration there for the twenty-fifth year.
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth year, and it'll be on.
Each number twenty-sixth.
Right, and I'm proud to say that, uh, our city is, is contributing towards that in the amount of five thousand dollars, that's gonna be directly to, uh, to the, to the station. There are some, some areas of concern, um, between the city and, um, yourself, uh, that I've, and I'd like to have your commitment that we can sit down and, and discuss those things and, and try to work those out.
Yes, sir.
I don't think it's necessary to, uh, bring those up here, but if you're willing to sit down, I, I think we can have a couple of council members and, uh, our city attorney meet with you so we can try to improve communications.
Yeah, I'd love to have a sit-down conversation with the city attorney.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can I make one recommendation for your future reports?
Yes, sir.
Since we get asked about graffiti constantly, can you throw that enforcement numbers in there?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, thank you for coming up and.
Thank you.
This report we look forward to the next one.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Keeping it safe. Okay, so that takes us to item number twelve, that's our council, uh, council monthly reports and announcements. Request for future agenda items, I'm gonna start to my right over here, Councilmember Alarcon.
Thank you, I just wanna note for the record that my, uh, monthly informational report has been filed and it includes sixteen city events, um, May was a lively month.
All right, thank you very much. Councilmember Olson?
Sure, uh, my report has also been filed, it's available online, I just wanna talk about a couple of things that happened. Um, the USL Crest Reville, it was a block party for. It was a block party for our local semi-pro soccer team that's moving to the Jet Hawk Stadium in Lancaster. There were thousands of people in attendance. I think that this is, uh, a league that's gonna be fully embraced by our community. And, uh, I just wanna get it out there so people don't have it in their heads. This is the Lancaster soccer team because it is an AV white soccer team. And stay tuned for more announcements about how our city is specifically gonna partner with them going forward. Also, the Memorial Day ceremony. I still have my pin on cause I'm quite proud of the event that we held. It, uh, honored tradition. It honored our veterans. As a veteran myself, I was honored to, um, highlight the Gold Star families who lost loved ones in service to our nation. Uh, it was important for me to introduce our veteran of the year to the community. I thought it was an amazing event. And I'll just leave it at that.
Thanks, council member Olson. Rich, uh, Mayor Purton Weller.
Yes, thank you. Uh, I've also filed my monthly informational report. I, I wanna add, uh, something that didn't appear on there. The, on the same day that we have our council meeting, we also have the Palmdale Sheriff Boosters meeting, uh, early in the morning. And, and I attended the one on May the first, same, same day. Um, and, uh, that's an opportunity for our, uh, booster board to, to meet with, uh, with the captain and, and so on. And from there we can, um, further deal with, uh, with issues and concerns, uh, regarding the sheriff's department. Um, I also attended the, um, Memorial Day ceremony. It was very well attended. Uh, we provided shade that particular day. Uh, it was, it was a very, very good program, uh, in honor of, uh, service members who gave up their lives for this country in war. And, uh, which is different from Veterans Day where we honor, uh, veterans. So there's, there's a, there's a very big difference between the two events, but, um, I, it was well attended. Um, I, I believe most of us were there and, uh, it, it was a very successful event. Um, I wanna comment on the ICSC, uh, trip that we do, uh, in Las Vegas. And, uh, this particular event, which we've been attending now for years, is, uh, an opportunity to, uh, bring development to our city. So we have the opportunity to sit down with, uh, with developers, uh, potential, uh, retail, uh, and other, uh, developers that might be, uh, bringing, um, more jobs. More economic opportunities to the city. Uh, it's an important event and over the years, we've been successful in bringing, uh, businesses to the city of Palmdale. Uh, I believe, uh, some examples of that would be over the years, Trader Joe's. Um, um, Barnes and Noble, uh, bookstore. Uh, the Target, uh, over on Forty-seventh East, I, I recall, uh, from one of those trips back in two thousand one through two thousand four. Um, so over the years, we've overcome a resistance that we have had, which is, which is minimized, but still some resistance in some of these large businesses in coming to the city of Palmdale. And we overcame that. And that's how we got these other businesses. Every one of these, like Trader Joe's, Barnes and Noble, and some of these others, uh, were met with the biggest turnout for their grand openings that they had in the entire state of California. The community response and support of these, uh, businesses has been very, very triumphant, really. In terms of, uh, bringing more amenities to our city and to our residents. So this is a meaningful trip and, uh, I believe that we should continue, uh, with that. You were attended, Ms. Perez, and, and met with a lot of the stakeholders and a lot of the developers that we need to, uh, encourage to come here. And, uh, I, I just wanted to make that comment on that particular trip.
Yes, it's very good and it's very beneficial for the city. I know you've been attending it for years. You've been on council for a long time. And you've seen that development come from those, those trips and those business meetings, a large scale development that is. Um, we all attended some of the same events. I submitted my report. I believe I had twenty-nine different events I, I attended in the last month. A few of them that, that stood out. Um, the wall mural paint days, those are great. We're cleaning up the city and getting kids involved by painting murals in the downtown area of Palmdale. Uh, we had the, uh, four point O ceremony at the AV Farron Event Center. I believe there is over, uh, seven hundred kids in the city of Palmdale that had an over four point O grade point average. So that is very impressive. We have a community of youth that is excelling. We saw that earlier today in the meeting. Uh, a lot of the same stuff, uh, High Desert Beer and Wine Festival. Um, I'm fortunate to definitely be the chairman of the Visit Palmdale Board. That was our second annual event. I'd like to s- thank our staff, specifically Megan and Luis, um, for helping put that together. It was a very successful event. And the attendance was higher than last year. And it's one of those events that seems to be growing and growing, even though there was a little windy. The attendance was still very, very good. Um, we just had the American Red Cross blood and, uh, pallet donation ribbon cutting. They are, their doors are open again. They're over on, uh, Avenue P and, uh, like twentieth, uh, twenty-fifth east. So the American Red Cross building has been renovated and reopened. Um, I attended the Young Entrepreneurs Academy graduation. Um, once again, the youth are excelling and, and they're taking advantage of the programs that we have uh, in our, in our community. And we're grateful for that. And, uh, the most recent thing we did was, uh, we had the groundbreaking ceremony for the Palmdale fourteen. Uh, on ramps, off ramps, and, uh, interchange. So everyone knows the Palmdale Boulevard freeway intersection. If you live here, chances are you can't get away with not using it at one point and another. But we were fortunate enough to start that project. It's a forty million dollar project. That's gonna completely revitalize that area, the, the on ramps, the off ramps, the landscape, the, the, the bridge will be redecorated. It will completely give it a look, a new look and a new feel when you enter Palmdale Boulevard. That's just one of the projects. That's happening, uh, major infrastructure projects that's happening in Palmdale in addition to the entire fourteen freeway being rehabilitated. Palmdale Boulevard is being worked on. Avenue R is being redone. And we have all these new businesses coming to town like the Trader Joe's Distribution Center and, and, uh, even more industrial centers and our Trade and Commerce Center, the supportive industrial, uh, tilt-up buildings are going up, uh, for more contractors that, that work with Lockheed and Northrop because those contracts. I still have a long time to go. So the, the city is really growing. If you were to add up all those projects, I believe it would probably be over a billion dollars in infrastructure and private development. So with that said, just be careful when you drive out there. We have a lot of construction. A lot of people are out there working and trying to revitalize the city. So bear with us on that. But if you see a lot of construction, you see a lot of, uh, rehab out there, that's, that's why there's, it's some of those projects going on. So, um, with that, I think Eric, yeah, I think Eric had a couple.
Cause I, I wanna piggyback off of that as well because this is the first of many you're gonna see on Palmdale Boulevard. As Assembly Member Juan Correio submitted legislation that allowed Caltrans to relinquish Palmdale Boulevard to the city. We've never owned it. It's been under the state jurisdiction. That has passed the assembly. It's moving on to the senate. It will make its way to the governor's desk. It will eventually be within our control. And then the options are endless of what's gonna happen from there. Um, so yeah, thank you for mentioning that groundbreaking. That's the start of many projects and development that's gonna happen in our city. I have a couple of future agenda items if the time is right.
Could I add just one more, um, event? I, I, I should, uh, mention that, um, looking at the wrong page here.
And while you look for that, I just wanna thank the staff, uh, for putting together Memorial Day ceremony. I think that was a very respectful and a very well-done, uh, ceremony. And I think the, the veteran community was very, um, happy and very pleased with that. We got good positive feedback. So thank you, staff, for putting that together.
Um, I, uh, am a member of the Executive Committee for Regional Homeless Alignment. And I represent, uh, the North County area. And, uh, it's very, very important, uh, to be part of that. Um, Mayor Bass is part of that, co- uh, Supervisor Bargher's there, uh, Su- Supervisor Horvath. Uh, council member from Los Angeles. Uh, we have, I believe, the mayor of Monrovia's there. Um, and one of the South Bay cities as well, is a member and a representative from, uh, the governor's office. And it's significant, uh, and, and the advocacy that I'm focusing on is for the rest of the county to recognize that in Allo Valley and in North County, including Santa Clarita, uh, there's a great disparity in the funding that is coming to our area. Uh, in terms of, if you make a comparison with our area as compared to, uh, the, the amount of money that is given to Los Angeles. And, uh, my purpose in being there is to highlight the issue that we have here in, in Allo Valley. One of the, uh, issues that stands out in my mind, and I believe in the minds of others that are concerned about this, is that many times we have an undercount of, of the, uh, unhoused in the Allo Valley because we have such a wide area. Where people are actually out in the desert and perhaps are not being counted simply because we have such a large area to cover. And as a consequence of that, we may have an undercount in our, uh, homeless population. Uh, but even with a full count, the disparity is shrinking. And, uh, we, uh, in my efforts, I hope that we can bring more funding for us to, uh, address this problem. Because you know, when you really think about it, it's a human suffering issue. The folks that are out there, some of them are there because of alcohol, narcotics, drug abuse, mental, uh, issues. And many others are simply out there because the economy has forced them out of their homes. Through no fault of their own. So they may be living in cars or in motorhomes, uh, or out on the street and under, under a tent someplace. Today we had at least a hundred and five degree temperatures today. Imagine the suffering of human beings, including children that are out there like that. And then conversely, in the winter, we have extreme cold here. So it's not just an issue of seeing the folks out there on the streets walking around with, um, stuff that apparently that's all of the possessions in the world. It's not just that visibility. I think the important thing that we really have to focus on is trying to alleviate the human suffering that's going on in our streets and out here in the desert. So I attend that meeting. I'm, I'm proud that I had the support of this council and other councils to get on that. And I will continue to advocate for that issue.
Mayor, I have a potential future agenda item that might help us with those goals. In the last, uh, budget briefing, we saw that, uh, our contribution, which is well over five million a year to Measure H. We get about ten percent of that back. The county is taking our money. Measure eight is due to expire and Measure H is due to expire in twenty twenty-six. So on this ballot in November twenty twenty-four, the county is putting a measure that will replace it in twenty twenty-five so that they can continue going with it. I wanna ask staff if we can do any sort of analysis or get, um, direction back on if there's a possible way that we can do our own measure to capture that money and not let the county have it. I, I, I know we would have to move quick to qualify anything for the ballot, but with the fact that they're going to do this and they don't give us our fair share back, I wanna see if there's a way we can keep all of it.
Well, a- as you and your, your colleagues have noted, in essence, job number one is keeping the money local, keeping the money here rather than be a donor to the rest of the county. I, I think absolutely we have that opportunity. Um, as you just noted, we're gonna have to hustle, but that's certainly what we're all good at. Um, I, I think the, the council, if I'm, if I'm gonna read correctly, maybe I'm not, so correct me, but, uh, this would probably have a- as much support from Lancaster as here. Uh, perhaps we look at teaming up, but, uh, even if they're not interested, as you said, keeping the money here, keeping the money at home. Absolutely. It'd be a, a footrace between us and the county, uh, who, who wins, so to speak. That, uh, but we're all certainly up to the task.
I, I can't imagine none of the other eighty or ninety cities in L.A. County aren't looking at this. I'm su- I'm sure we're not the only ones.
Yeah, well, it, 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 as, as Councilman Olson noted, the fact they're looking to change the, the initiative, the law, a year ahead of its sunset date is a huge message that they want that money in their pocket. They're planning ahead at least a year, if not longer. Um, it's a very strategic move, uh, depending on how you view it. It's either very clever or very greedy. But, uh, again, your greater goal is to not be a donor to the rest of L.A. County.
We certainly contribute our fair share to the entire county. Um, I think there's a, a net profit to Los Angeles County from, in comparison to the services that we get back. Uh, and in terms of the money that is, that is furnished back. So whatever we can do to retain our, our resources here, I think is something that we need to pursue and we'll have to pursue it quickly. Uh, and, and, and the voters can decide whether they want the money to go down to L.A. or whether they wanna keep the money here. Simple as that.
Sir.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else?
Yes. This might be a little bit more controversial. But a couple of months ago, I asked for an a- analysis on the feasibility of bringing back the directly elected mayor. In the original judgment, in the, uh, VRA case brought against the city, the judge wrote that removing the directly elected mayor was not an appropriate remedy to address the concern of the VRA. Is there a updated judgment from the courts that allow us or recognize the fact that we went to five districts?
Not directly, um, to, to expound very quickly. Uh, there was the litigation. The city was up on a, appealed it. You were before the, uh, the appellate court. Uh, the plaintiff in the city came to a, a stipulated settlement agreement. Everybody, I think, was probably weary of the litigation. But what the court said very clearly in the stipulated judgment, which is the binding judgment. It's a, uh, and I'm paraphrasing, but I, the judge, don't really care how you solve your racially polarized voting. The, the thing that violated the CVRA, the Voting Rights Act. You can look at maintaining your directly elected mayor in four districts. You could look at five. You could look at weighted voting. You could look at cumulative voting. Bottom line, the, the judge, and this is pretty close to a quote. Um, do whatever you think is best for your community that does not violate the Voting Rights Act. So the door is open to revert back to four and one or to stay at five. Or anything that is consistent with the Voting Rights Act is good with Judge Mooney. The, the judge who handled that case. So y- you're armed with flexibility.
So can you prepare a report that outlines the flexibility?
Well, I will indeed. I will indeed.
Thank you. All right. Well, if there's nothing else, we're gonna move on to item number thirteen, public participation and comments. Uh, Madam Clerk, do we have anyone wishing to speak?
We have Eugene Hernandez.
Okay.
Eugene. Hi. I wasn't gonna say anything today, but I saw something so outrageous that I wanted to bring it to your attention. As I was driving in on Sierra Highway and Avenue R, I saw this fourteen-year-old girl strutting herself on Sierra Highway. And a few steps behind her was a black pimp. And immediately upon parking here, I told James, your park and recreation director about this. What did he do? Did he pull out a phone and talk to the sheriff? No, he just completely ignored me. And, and I waited for ten minutes. Finally, I yelled at him. I said, hey, this, this gotta be, this gotta be investigated right now. This gotta be stopped. So finally he talked to the sheriffs. But this is outrageous and, and white racism for this parks and recreation person that's hired by your. But this is outrageous and and white racism for this parks and recreation person that's hired by your city. To completely ignore this crime. And by the way, I've seen a lot of acts of prostitution along Palmdale Boulevard that's not being stopped. But this, this should be addressed right away. Because this poor little girl shouldn't be pimped out by this black pimp, you know, it it's and it's right here. Within, within throwing distance.
Thank you. Next speaker?
We have Antelope Valley Flag Football.
How you doing, Mayor? How you doing, council members?
My name is John Vasquez and I'm the Sports Commissioner for the Antelope Valley Rise Flag Football here in Palmdale. We are a new nonprofit flag football league in our third season. We play two seasons a year, it's spring and fall at Marie Kerr Park. We had a hundred and three children in our first season. Ninety-two in our second season. This spring, we have a hundred and forty-one children signed up. We implemented a new four and five year old old division, which is the funniest and most fun games to watch. My son was one of the first ones to run backwards on a touchdown for the other team. I visited the West Side Union School District when I first started. And they've been great on allowing us to distribute flyers and bring the program to all their children in the school. However, when I visited the Palmdale School District, they told me they would not allow me to do so unless I was a part of the city of Palmdale. So I'm here to explore how Rise Flag Football can be a part of the city of Palmdale, bring this program more to children, to more children in the Antelope Valley. Flag football is the fastest growing sports in the country right now. Girl flag football participation is on the rise. Last year in twenty twenty-three, California was the last state to implement girls' flag football in high school. The colleges are doing the same now and they will likely start recruiting young players from all areas on offering scholarships just like any other sport. All the other states have had flag football for the past five to seven years in high school for girls. Now it is an Olympic sport. The International Federation of American Flag Football is now hosting its first. World National Championships this year in twenty twenty-four. Additionally, the International Olympic Committee announced the inclusion of men's and world's flag football. In the twenty twenty-eight Summer Olympics. Here in Los Angeles. Can I finish? Just.
Sure, you're close and then I'll connect you with somebody from staff.
Thank you. My goal here is to be a part of the city of. Palmdale, eventually Lancaster and grow this program for the Antelope Valley for our boys and girls. Therefore, I'm here to ask if the city would help us with a grant or something, assist our growth, uh. I have been paying everything out of my own pocket, field maintenance, preparation, referee fees, insurance, equipment, and so much more. I'm asking for help and see how Rise Flag Football can become a part of the city and schools and be let into the school programs.
Okay, do you have any cards or any information?
Yes, I do.
Just leave that with the clerk and then I'm gonna connect you with Eric Nembrowski, he's in the back and then. Black suit, he'll grab you in the back and then I'll help you out.
Thank you, and I'd like to invite you guys all to Marie Kerr Park on Sundays to watch us play. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, next speaker?
Brain Balance of Palmdale.
How you doing?
Hi, good evening.
I already know why you're here, Renee already.
Oh, he's he's he texted you?
Yeah, but you gotta hear what you have to say.
Okay, well, thank you for um allowing me to speak. And I apologize in advance, my throat's a little bit sore and also um I'm very nervous because I'm very passionate with. What I'm about to talk about. Um, my name is Yomaya Gonzalez. I am the owner of Brain Balance of Palmdale, which is a learning center here. In the Antelope Valley, um, designed to help children and adults improve focus, attention, behavioral challenges, academic performance. Sensory issues. We have a lot of students that have ADHD, autism, dyslexia and other. Um, double mental delays and also mental um illness. Um, you may or may not have heard about the arson attack. That targeted our business in on May nineteenth, we were on the news. Um, uh, ABC seven and also um Univision treinta y cuatro. Um, we have been closed since May nineteenth. This has left our families um very concerned for. Their child's development because they rely on our services for. Um, these behavioral challenges that their child struggles with and amongst other um challenges. I have three questions for you, one. Um, well, first, thanks to our fire department and our sheriff's station, um, there was no injuries. Um, but our building did suffer severe damage on the exterior and. And the interior um needs deep sanitation and cleaning from a fire restoration company. So here are my questions, one, um, now read them.
Yeah.
Are there any?
We can't, we can't really get involved in a discussion back and forth, but would you be willing to say afterwards, the meeting's almost over? And we can go over some of this stuff offline after the meeting? The the meeting will be done soon and then we can, we can meet after, but we're not allowed to go back and forth during public comment.
Okay, um.
But just hang tight and we'll, we'll be with you after the meeting, okay?
Okay.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, no, that, that's what I was expecting.
Yeah, well, we appreciate you coming and voicing your concern. I saw it on the news as well.
You did, okay. Um, can I ask my questions or?
Oh, after the meeting. So we're gonna finish public comment and then after the meeting's over, we'll come back with you.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Alright, next speaker?
Brain Balance of Palmdale, a second speaker card.
Good afternoon, my name is Claudia Casania, Ashley, uh, I'm one of the parents that um. Calls to takes my son to Brain Balance and we ask if we support, you know, we ask, we're here to support Brain Balance because. Like Ms. Gonzalez said, um, it's been already since May nineteen that our kids are now receiving services. Um, and it's like I say, we have kids with disabilities that depend on this. Um, agency to provide services for our kids. We need your support. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brain Balance of Palmdale.
Good evening, so I am one of the other parents and my son, it is, he is five years old. And because of the closing, he is struggling, especially at school and at home. So if you can please, yes, um, after we can, we'll stay with you and maybe we can, you can help us out. Okay.
Thank you.
We have Christine Parkinson.
Good evening, um, actually, what I was gonna talk about was the fireworks, but Mrs. Alarcon. Decided to leave as she did the last meeting as well. Um, you guys brought up great points about it. The one thing that I do wanna bring up is that. I don't feel that a company or a nonprofit that has been working tirelessly over the years at one location. Should be penalized by a lottery and have them move locations. Okay, I worked with TNT. I know how it works. If they get a new location, they will offer it to you. So um, I won't bore you with the rest of the stuff that I had written down. I do wanna say um, thank you for the Memorial Day celebration. It was nice to see you guys out there. Um, it was a very nice um tribute to our fallen soldiers, so I appreciate that. Um, love the fact that Avenue R is finally getting done after all these years, you know, it's. Treacherous to drive that road when you're seeing people walk along the side in the dark and you don't know, you can really can't see them, so thank you for that. Um, and then I know you can't answer the question. But I really wanna know what section of Palmdale Boulevard you're talking about acquiring from the state? Is it the whole? In city limits, is it? I I would really love to know that. I saw the um social media post, but I could not figure out exactly where that was, so if.
Okay.
If you guys could.
Yeah, we'll be here after.
Okay, thank you.
Alright.
Mario presents.
Hi, Maria.
Hi. So she left, but I'm gonna say it anyways. My comments are intended for the representatives of districts one through four. Since legal counsel for District Five chose to recuse themselves from comments at their council meeting due to litigation against the Palmdale Freedom Coalition. And its members by Andrea Alarcon. To avoid a conflict of interest, I am also choosing to write my comments accordingly. The city of Palmdale deserves a balanced budget. Our city's streets on the east side are riddled with potholes from wear and tear. Our residents commute on average forty-seven minutes, paying five dollars a gallon. In an economy where eggs are becoming a luxury and bacon isn't being packaged by the pound anymore. It's understandable why everyone is quickly approaching the red. The city has consistently rolled over for litigation resulting in million dollar payouts. Um, and a, a million dollar payments, districts and a rotating mayor that we don't get to choose. The city pays for a diversity equity and inclusion commission. That produces no results, but every member of that board receives a check from the residents for their attendance. Palmdale needs to cut the pork where it can, as many of the residents in your community are learning to do. A city's mission should be, but should be to make the lives of the residents better through infrastructure. Water saving and harvesting should be ingrained into city planning as it's a finite resource. Abundant resources like sun and wind should be integrated as much as possible to save the residents the cost of keeping the lights on. With the hope that the city generates more than enough energy to net a zero electric bill. These ideas are more than just a pipe dream. They are achievable and will improve our lives for our residents. No business or city can operate in a deficit for very long. Our country is a trillion dollars in debt and we should not be following their example.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
David Harris.
Hey, David. Alright, we get to twice tonight.
Right, sorry, sorry. Um, couple things, one is um, uh, the reason I actually filled it out was an elected mayor. Um, I do believe that having an elected mayor uh makes a statement, but. I've gotta commend our current mayor for so many things that you do uh throughout the community. Um, so by commenting on an elected mayor in no way, shape or form. Um, goes to your performance because you're doing an awesome job, in my opinion. Um, also, I think our city manager is doing an awesome job, um, so I was very pleased to see. Uh, the council come together on that. Um, she's alert, attentive and and responsive to organizations. Um, that reach out appropriately. Um, and then lastly, on the fireworks uh debate, um. Nonprofits can choose their own location. Um, so make no mistake, we can, if if I have a property available and it's free to us. Um, and it's within the city map, uh, that was approved this evening, we can, we can work with the company to acquire that location. Uh, so it's not exactly assigned, um, but the lottery system would. Uh, probably not work for for some organizations that have been pretty stable, so. Uh, and I believe that uh, um, although it wasn't said, but um. I think there was a lot more organizations that applied uh to get the fireworks stands, but just didn't meet the requirement. Um, and so I think those, that's where the educational piece comes in over the next twelve months. Where the city will work with those organizations to get them compliant, and then those organizations can decide if they wanna do that. But I do know that there are some organizations that apply that do get turned away, simply because they're not registered with the state or something. Um, so I did wanna bring that back, so thank you.
Thank you for that information.
Yeah, no more speakers, speaker cards on the side.
Okay.
Can I jump in real quick?
Up, yeah, one more.
Good evening.
How's it doing?
So um, as far as the hu- not the, um, the animal shelter, I did find uh, N A C E N T dot org. As well as um, duh 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 California for all animals. These are two websites you guys could look into and find uh grants. They actually did distribute, I believe, two hundred and twenty or two hundred and sixty thousand dollars to LA County. So as far as trying to um acquire funds or whatnot, so we can improve whatever we need for the animal care facilities. Um, as far as the homeless and Measure H. So Measure H in two thousand sixteen, LA County had a little under fifty thousand homeless population. And it's now over seventy-five thousand, so as far as I view that. And I just heard on the radio too, they're asking for to approve like another six billion dollars or something for the homeless. They're just throwing money away. Uh, uh, last time I was up here and I pulled up uh nonprofit organizations for homeless, where they're looking for directors. Hundred, six-figure positions. So you got all these nonprofit organizations or these entities that are. Helping the homelessness, making six, six figures. So once you get rid of the homelessness. That six-figure job is obsolete, that one's obsolete, that one's obsolete, so we're, the, it's throwing money down the, down the drain. And as far as uh, voting for a mayor, which I prefer, um, no offense to anybody, but I spoke about this before, how. Some people wanna run for mayor, some people are on the run for city council, right? That's why it it's structured how, how it was before. But I don't see why there isn't a reason that we can't enact an ordinance or something like that, right? We're a municipality. So there's actions and things that I do believe can be looked into to get things back online with having a a voted. Uh, elected mayor, so thank you.
Thank you. Alright, any other speakers? Anybody? Alright, seeing none. So that takes us to the adjournment of this meeting. I wanna thank everyone for coming out. I wanna thank the staff. We got a lot done this last month. Uh, we had a great meeting. Thanks for all who participated. Our next meeting's gonna be June twenty-six, five P M right here, back at the council chamber. Until then, everybody get home safe. And we also have an adjournment for uh Ms. Rios Richard. Will you adjourn in the memory of Ms. Rios for us? Do you have something to say about her?
I do, um. And Ms. Anna, uh, Maria Rios was the principal at Saint Mary's Elementary School for for many years. And uh, she was, uh, she was loved. She touched many, many families uh here in Palmdale and in fact, uh. Beyond Palmdale because there were persons who had their children educated at uh Saint Mary's School, so. Uh, she passed away recently, uh, and uh, I I believe that we should close uh this meeting in her memory. And if we could have that reflected in the minutes, thank you very much.
Thank you, Richard. Alright, we're gonna adjourn in her memory. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night and this meeting's adjourned.